All to order, the special meeting of the Los Gatos Town Council for commission interviews for November twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Thank you all for being here. And just to let you know, the order of the commissions that we're going to go in, let me see, is. So first will be the Community Health and Senior Services Commission, and then the Planning Commission, and then the Complete Streets and Transportation Commission, then Parks and Sustainability, then we'll probably take a recess about that moment, and then the Library Board, the Personnel Board, the DEI Commission, and then finally, the Arts and Culture Commission. So thank you all for being here. We're delighted to have, I think, thirty-one applicants, which is a tremendous show of volunteer spirit and interest in getting involved in the town. But the meeting will be a little bit long. So you, we will ask you to, I'll go into the details later. So Town Clerk, do you want to explain a little bit more about the process?
Sure. Would you like me to do the roll call first? Okay. Councilmember Risto? Councilmember Reni?
Here.
Councilmember Badami?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Hudes?
Here.
The council is scheduled to interview thirty-one applicants. The interview binders contain interview questions as approved by Council Policy two-dash-eleven. The standard questions are limited in number to allow the applicant sufficient time to respond. You can decide not to ask all the provided questions, change the order in which they're provided, or ask other appropriate questions. The mayor will determine the order. Council members will ask questions for each applicant, and the applicant will be given two minutes to respond to each question. Once the interviews are completed, I will announce the boards, commissions, and committees, along with the number of vacancies and the number of applicants who have applied to the positions, and distribute the ballots. Once the voting process for all the boards and commissions is complete, I will announce the results. In order for a candidate to be appointed, a majority of three or more votes must occur. In the event of a tie vote, a runoff will be held, and we'll distribute additional ballots as necessary. The mayor will now proceed with the interviews.
Okay, thank you. The first thing we're going to do is verbal communications. I have one card verbal, and this is entitled Brown Act, and a person is allowed to speak about what is on the agenda for tonight, which are the appointments. Thank you. We can't accept anything here.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank all the applicants for coming. I know it's volunteer. I am a public person that comes, I've been coming here to a lot of, some of the town council meetings first, and then I have gone to several of the, you know, like I'm not a public speaker, but the traffic and arts and culture and DEI and so on. And I did, you know, I, everybody in the public complains, and, you know, one of the complaints was, like with DEI, is what's going on in the actual world and, you know, that, there was only two people that were at the last meeting. There were the mayor and Badami were there, and I was the only public speaker, and we didn't get to ask questions, you know. I mean, we, they, the commission, the commissioner and the head chair commissioner and Commissioner Wolf talked about a major concern that's going on politically-wise, and they're asking for the chief of police if, how to handle the Brown Act and stuff like that. And I'm coming in as a Brown Act because I got censored at Planning Commission just trying to public speak, and I wasn't, say, no, this is a Brown Act, and I wasn't, you know, it shook me up right then, and I was just trying to public speak. And at Art and Culture, I was limited to two minutes when I was trying to ask about a Christmas truce statue. And, you know, I'd rather, I had, I'm a prophetic dreamer, and what that is, is I get dreams, it's Acts two-seventeen. I just get dreams, and some, one of the dreams was like a submarine, a yellow submarine, and I just, you know, it reminds me of that. But I've stated, you know, Civil War and Project Twenty-Twenty-Five, and I just think that the two parties, and what I'm seeing here between three Democrats and two things is kind of the same. You guys are infighting at times, and it, safety issues that I brought up with traffic and stuff like, like across the street. Now, what I'm just trying to say is, these flowers are going to put out for them to take for coming out here, and I just, can you give the public, everybody, give the public a little bit more time, or, you know, I wanted to give like three hundred dollars and rent Numu, and I'm not allowed to do that because of some of the, you know, like, this, the one card that I said is the shooter, and it's important because you can, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your comments. And now, we will move on to interviews for our commissions. And first of all, I want to say thank you to everyone for applying and for be willing, willing to serve on a board, committee, or commission. I'm sure you'll find it, as I have, to be very meaningful, and we are very grateful for your willingness to volunteer your time and talent to the town. The council members have read your applications and may ask clarifying questions to better understand your interest and ability to serve. Since we have more positions than applicants on the Community Health and Senior Services Commission and the Personnel Board, we would ask if you would indicate your interest in being appointed to those boards in case you're not appointed to your preferred commission. And I think we'd like to just have a paper for you to put your name down next to those if you're interested in that, and we'll take that at the end. So to make the process as fair as we can, we're not going to follow alphabetical order for, for the applicants or the commissions. So I mentioned the order of the commissions earlier today, and so the, but basically, when we call your commission, we'd like all applicants for that commission to come up and join us at the table and to state your name. Then, when we're ready to start, a council member will ask the first question of an applicant who I designate. And then each council member will have an opportunity to ask questions of that candidate, and then we'll move to the next candidate. You will have two minutes to answer, and you don't need to use all of that time, and the council members aren't required to ask a question either if they'd like to skip. And then we'll have an opportunity, there is at least an opportunity for every council member to ask a question, and no council member will be prevented from asking an appropriate question of the applicants. So after we get through the first applicant, we'll move to the next applicant, and I will ask a council member to start the process with a different applicant. And so that way, we will work our way through, and I think that it'll be a fair process. When we get done with that commission, we will thank you, and we'll ask the next commission to come up to the table and start the process again. After we've done all of the interviews, the council will deliberate and make appointments. That will occur pretty late in the evening. You're welcome to stay, or you can watch as this is being carried on K-Cat and on Zoom. So once again, thank you for your interest and participating in this. And so first, I want, I'd like to start with the Community Health and Senior Services Commission, and I think we have only one applicant for that. So, and again, if I've mispronounced a name, please correct me. So this is Shailaja Venkatesubramanian. Hi, come on up. And if we could maybe have a paper, Clerk? Oh, great. Okay. Yes, please, yeah, please use the mic. And so for this question, I'd like to start with Councilmember Reni, and we will be going this order of council members. So go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome. In your application, it says you haven't attended any Community Health and Senior Services Commission meetings yet. Are you familiar with what they're working on? What do you believe the commission does? Let's start there.
I believe the commission is focused on health and seniors from the name of it. And I just read briefly online about some ten-year plan that has been put forward by the commission, but other than that, I don't know too many specifics.
Okay, thank you.
Moore?
Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, sorry.
That's quite all right. Thank you very much for your interest. Good to see you. You talked in your application about loneliness among seniors and older adults. I think that's something that's very important. Could you talk a little bit about what you might be interested in doing in that space of loneliness and helping, you know, older adults in our community experience less loneliness?
Okay. So just to give you a little background, my father lived with me for nine years before he passed away three years ago. And not, not just that he was older, but he was also from India. So given everything, he experienced, and also he had just lost his wife. So given everything together, he did feel a lot of loneliness. And I had to literally think of creative ways to find social settings for him where he would feel comfortable and feel accepted. And I don't think I was terribly successful, but after he passed away too, I've been talking to a lot of seniors that I meet when I walk my dog. And even this morning, I spoke to a couple, and they were telling me that loneliness is a problem because their kids are probably not even the same, not even in the same city or the same state. And a lot of times, they don't have anyone to talk to, and especially if they're alone, which one of my neighbors is. She is just by herself, and she's not in very good health. She just has a dog. She has a helper coming in once in a while. So one of the things that I did think about a long time ago, I don't know whether this is feasible or doable, but just putting it out there, is that we do have high school students and middle school students, maybe, maybe high school students, who are probably looking for volunteer hours. And if we could match up high school students and maybe other adults who are willing to volunteer as well, to check in with the seniors, however they want to be checked in, checked on, checked on, through a phone call or maybe a meeting. And I think, I do believe that relationships between generations is extremely important. And there's, and both sides have a lot to offer to the other. And I do think that if we could set up a system like that, I know there's, there's a lot of other things like checking backgrounds and medical issues and insurance issues. I know there are things like that, but I would love to see that happen. And I've seen this happen in other countries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So if I might ask, the commission has mostly been focused on senior services. How could the scope of the commission be expanded to address health issues?
So regarding health, so again, during my chats, especially after I applied to be on this commission, I, every time I was in walks, I was spotting seniors and chatting them up. And one of them actually told me that, hey, we should have something where someone helps us out with insurance and long-term care and so on. And I was like, yeah, that's a great idea. And then I went digging in on the website, on the Los Gatos Seniors Commission's website, or the Los Gatos Recreation website, and those services are already being offered. And I think a lot of people don't even know about it. I think many of the services have to be advertised, and also advertised in a way that will get to the seniors. Regarding health, I do believe that, first of all, walking is a great thing for seniors. And I know from experience, and I know from talking to a lot of seniors, that we lack benches along the way. And they get really tired, and they're literally looking for benches, and especially on rainy days. One of the seniors told me that he just wished that there was a concrete bench instead of a wooden bench, so it would dry up sooner. So little things like that, and maybe helping out with diet, or maybe having a speaker series about good diets. Those are the only ideas I could think about right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. First of all, I'm pleased that you're applying, and it sounds like between, you know, your, your professional experience, but also your lived experience, you have a really good view for what seniors need. So I actually don't have any questions. I think your application is awesome, and I think if appointed, once you get to a meeting, you'll be able to figure out very broadly how to expand what they're doing. So thank
Thank you.
Mayor Badami?
I'll pass. My questions have been answered. So thank you. Oh, you're welcome.
Well, thank you very much. You know, I'm going to do this just because, and we're going to do this with everyone. If you were not appointed and wanted to be appointed to the Personnel Board, you could indicate that here. Yeah, it's, it's, you don't, no, no need to. It's, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move to the Planning Commission now. And so I think we may have several people who are virtual, but if you are, have applied to the Planning Commission, please come up and state your name. And for the, for the Planning Commission, yeah, go ahead. Nigel? Okay. Hi. Do we have anyone online?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have Jeffrey Burnett.
Okay. So it seems like we do not have Adam Mayer. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we'll start the questions with Vice Mayor to Mr. Chandler.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for being here. The Planning Commission deals a lot of technical land use issues, so I wanted to hear if you could talk through a little bit of your experience with, you know, the things that come before the Planning Commission, land use, housing, those sorts of issues.
I'm assuming like this. Okay, got it. All right, cool. I was going to say that I work as an appraiser, actually. So that's somebody who essentially develops opinions of value for property. And a really important part of appraisal is determining what laws are affecting the subject properties that I praise. And so I need to study zoning codes of many different cities across the various different areas that I've appraised in. I used to live in Southern California, and so I have a lot of experience with zoning codes in Southern California. But now that I'm working here in Northern California, I'm also getting exposed to more zoning codes here, for example, San Francisco, San Jose, and also Los Gatos. I've looked into the zoning code here a little bit. So, yeah.
Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How would you define the character of the town? That's one of the things that appears in our general plan.
How would I define the character of Los Gatos? I would say, from what I've experienced of the town, that it's a town that really cares about the people that live here. It's a town that really values its seniors in particular. It's a town that really wants to kind of preserve, for example, its open green spaces and to make sure it's a beautiful town to live in. I noticed, for example, the fall colors here are wonderful. They're fantastic, right? And I think there's a lot of work that gets put in by the town to keep that a lasting legacy for the residents here. Yes. Something I've also found as I walk through the streets here, for example, is I can see in people's lawns, they have like Los Gatos in big letters. They have the cat statues also, really prominent. Like, there's so many residents here who have like a a pride, a sense of like belonging here, that I think is really inspiring. And I think that's, that speaks to the character of the town.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. So, it might have been in here, have you, you've watched some of the Planning Commission meetings?
I did watch the most recent one, yes.
Okay, so, it's kind of interesting, especially in the last couple of years, because we have kind of a divide of what the Planning Commission has to deal with in terms of one person wanting to do a remodel versus a large development that might be coming forward. So, you know, what do you think about that? Like, in terms of getting into, like, what kind of gableing and siding somebody might have on a historic home versus someone proposing a four-story building?
Right, interesting. Well, I mean, I think that I would need to look at the specific zoning map of that property, and see whether the property falls within the area where that kind of gableing or signage is permitted, right? If that gableing or signage is permitted, then I would see no reason to view it negatively as a planning commissioner. Yeah.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. I also noticed that you applied for complete streets and transportation, so you applied for two different commissions. Which one is your priority?
I would say that I believe my expertise will be better suited for the Planning Commission as an appraiser. I think that I have a more intimate idea of how zoning codes can, for example, affect property values. And I know that one of the goals, I suppose, of some, I mean, I remember in the Planning Commission meeting that I watched, several of the council members were talking about how affordability was a priority, right? And I know that there was some debate over, for example, floor area ratios, and whether the town should count basement area towards floor area ratios, and how that would affect the size of housing, and how that might affect seniors in the town, and anyone who wants to purchase something here, the properties, right? I think that I would have a better, you know, I have a good idea of how these sorts of minutia affect property values in Los Gatos, and I think I would be able to bring some more points of clarity in those regards.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Badami, did I get you? That was just your question, wasn't it? Yeah, okay, thanks. So, now I will, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rennie.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, walk me through your thought process on how you'd make a decision. Let's say a remodel comes before you, and the applicant comes up and says, you know, we've spent all our money on this house, and we're trying to grow our family, and it's too small, and we need this two-story house with windows that overlook the neighbors, and the neighbors are thinking that, well, there's gonna be too much shadow on my house, and I'll lose my privacy, and I don't think they should have a second story. How do you work through that? How do you make a decision in that case?
Yeah, I mean, I think that I would want to hear the direct complaints of the neighbors, for example, if they feel like their privacy is being impinged, right, by, for example, proposed windows that are overlooking their property. I think, though, that my priority would be in seeing how the remodel fits into the existing zoning code. Is it permitted? If it is permitted, then we would want to balance the complaints that residents bring forth, yes. But ultimately, people should have the right to expand their families, right, also? Yes, that is...
Vice Mayor?
You already got me, yeah. Yeah.
Well, good. I'm just trying to get in the hang of my own system here. So, the next applicant is Jeffrey Barnett, and I think he's online. And I will start with the first question for Mr. Barnett, once we have him, we have him here. Okay, good evening.
Councilmembers.
My question is, what tools does the town have to ensure that affordable housing is built when there's an inclusionary requirement?
I'm not sure I understand the question. If you could repeat that, I appreciate it.
Sure. So, often, there's an inclusionary requirement for affordable housing. What tools does the town have to make sure that the affordable housing is actually built in a larger development?
Well, we had an interesting conversation about that with the second half of the North Forty, and it proved to be a very difficult issue in that particular case. Covenants could certainly be recorded to, to enforce the developers' promise to include inclusionary housing, middle, low, and very low housing. At the moment, I'm having trouble, maybe I'm a little camera shy about coming up with other ideas.
No problem. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Barnett. Whoops, I just, I don't see you, I'm talking to our group, I don't, oh, I see you, very small up there, okay. Any, oh, there you are. Anyway, thank you for reapplying to the Planning Commission. You've been on for five years, I believe, now?
One four-year term and one two-year term.
Oh, yes, okay, so sorry about that. So, given your experience on the Planning Commission, and how the legal landscape has changed, what, what education experience that you've gathered over the last couple of years, do you think you can bring forward for the challenges we'll be facing on the Planning Commission in the next couple of years?
Well, we have a lot of challenges with our hands being tied by Sacramento with the Builders' Remedy, the Housing Accountability Act, SB 9, and more, so, and potential penalties if we don't comply with all of those requirements. So, we're in a very challenging environment legally. I believe that we have to be attentive about whether we're tiptoeing into a legal liability situation. I know there's been litigation, and as a commissioner, I'd like to see that risk reduced.
Thank you.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barnett, for your application. What improvements, if any, would you see strengthen?
I've not been able to hear the microphone from Commissioner, Councilmember Badami.
Why, what is that about me? It just happens to me. You guys, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, if you keep your voice up, and I'm sorry to trouble you, I'll do my best to hear you.
No worries, there won't be any demerit on your application.
Now I can hear you clearly.
Is this better? Okay.
Absolutely.
What improvements, if any, would strengthen our objective standards as we struggle with these on the Planning Commission and at council level?
Well, the, the pro-TAM committees that are being established, will need to work hard within the limits of the law to develop as strict, if I may say, and objective standards for residential and commercial properties. And it is a challenge, because there's some little leeway under the law, and the fact that objective standards need to be very objective. So, I think we can, as a Planning Commission and as the council, continue to work to improve the current status of the, of the guidelines.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
I'm familiar with Commissioner Barnett's work, I'm gonna pass.
Thank you, thank you very much for your interest in reapplying, Mr. Barnett. Could you, you've, like you said, you've served on the Commission for about six years now, and, you know, your hands have been increasingly tied in what you can do as a commissioner. What makes you interested in continuing to serve on the Commission?
Well, there's several levels. One, I'm terribly concerned about the community that's been so good to me, our culture, our beauty of our town, all need to be preserved as much as possible. So, that's, one goal is preservation. Another goal is that I'm privileged to serve on the Planning Commission, because it gives me a little opportunity to give back to the town that's given so much to me and my family. I like the intellectual challenge of dealing with the new technical rules. And I very much enjoy the collegiality of working with fellow commissioners who, in my experience, are prepared and ask good questions. And we have dialogue, I think we have less dissension than we've had in the past, but I think everyone's doing their best to come to best conclusions after careful preparation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next question will go to Mr. Boland from Councilmember Risto.
Okay, thank you for your application, Mr. Boland. And I'm in a similar situation as you, I've been before, you know, to do a remodel or something. When you've gone through a process yourself, I think then, as you're looking at the constituency, you have a different lens. With your observations of the Planning Commission, what do you think we're doing well, and where can we improve with helping homeowners create homes that they want and need without unduly burdening them, but while preserving what we're trying to keep in Los Gatos?
I believe that planning, from the staff, they basically do a good job. The tricky, the slippery slope for, for planning is SB 9 and the housing element, you know. The ADU thing is why I'm getting involved, because there's, there's changes that are gonna be made that are out of the control of the town. And I think it's important to get involved to try to steer those so it's done right the first time. But I think the Planning Commission does a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Badami.
Can you hear me okay? We're very close. Okay, all right. With our housing element in place, can you provide your thoughts on the direction and care about how the town will grow and change?
The housing element, it's gonna be tough, it, it's gonna be tough to stay a town, and that's the, the whole goal is to stay a town, because you see this high-density housing going in everywhere, particularly Los Gatos Boulevard, Winchester and Blossom Hill, there's a 10-story building proposed there, with residential single stories behind it. I personally think that's a problem, but like I said, we're tied with this housing element, where, you know, there's almost, there's only so much we can do as a town. But those things, I think they need pushed back as, as hard as we can push back.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Boland, I'll go back to the question I asked before, which is really about the balance between kind of competing interests of the, of the applicant and the neighbors, and, you know, what's your thought process on how to work through that?
So, I'm, I'm the contractor, I've been living in this town for almost 30 years. And I see a lot of that situation, a two-story next to a bungalow. My, my first suggestions would be a couple of things. Is there room to expand outward? Is there an option to go, you know, with a basement down below? Where you're not impeding on the neighbors' privacy and... The other side of the element, too, that I see a lot is, people come and they propose and they, you know, get approved for a two-story house as a homeowner, and by the time we're done, it was really a ruse, it was a spec house. So, you have builders coming into town, doing projects, affecting all the neighbors who are residents here, and they just walk away, they take the money and run. So, I, I think it's important to try to find, especially in the historic area, the Almond Grove area, is there room to go out instead of up? And is there, you know, is there an option to go down? But if it has to be done, there has to be a balance. You know, maybe, maybe the neighbor wants some screening, you know, some big trees, you know. Those are things that the consulting architect usually does a pretty good job at, in the town staff report. But, you know, obviously, the neighbors, their input is important to me.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thanks for your interest in your application. You, you talked in your last answer about, you know, pushing back against some of these developments that are less in line with, with the character, perhaps. How would you balance pushing back against those applications with the legal requirements and the legal challenges that are in front of us?
Well, that's, that's, you know, the, when, Blossom Hill and Winchester, okay, legally, the housing element for the state, they're probably, or I don't know if they're doing a Builders' Remedy on that, I'm not familiar with that, that project. I'm not against there being high-density housing there, but does it need to be 10 stories? Can it be three stories? You know, work with the developer to maybe scale in that residential area, because there are, you know, there's a cul-de-sac right behind that project, which I'm well aware of. That's life-changing for those people, you know, when they're looking out their back door, and they're looking up, you know, 10 stories of balconies. So, pushing back part, we try to be, you know, hey, can we, you know, downsize this thing? Out on Los Gatos Boulevard, it might be a little different, there's a lot of mixed commercial. You know, you might have to say, you know, the state, they, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, Builders' Remedy, they're gonna do what they're gonna do. I'm just talking about more in the neighborhood kind of settings.
Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed on your application, you spoke about having done some work on historic structures and that type of thing. Do you have any thoughts about how historic aspects of the town can be even further preserved than what we're doing now?
I see a lot, I've, I've been, since the Soto Works Plaza, I used to do all Dave Flick's work, so I've been there for the Sorensen Building, I've worked on all those buildings. My own home was abandoned on Alexander Avenue, restored that. I have a problem when some of these homes, they start the remodel, and about halfway through, the house just goes away. I, I'm all about preserving the historical look in the feel of the town and the small community. So, that would be something that I would probably be a little tougher on, as far as, hey, when you started this project, you agreed to keep, you know, this portion of the project. Why are you coming back to us saying, now, we're gonna tear it down now and, you know, change the plan? And it seems to be more and more as time goes on.
Thank you very much. So, the next question, Mr. Mayor, thank you for coming, and Councilmember Badami, if you could start the questions, please.
Welcome back. So, I'd like your thoughts on maintaining the character of the town with our housing element in place, because I believe this happened after you left.
Yeah, I mean, can you hear me? I understand the issues around the tension between the town and the state with their housing mandates, and I know this is, you know, as a practicing architect, I work in many different jurisdictions, so this is not a problem that's unique to Los Gatos. But I think that the Planning Commission has a great opportunity to have a dialogue with the project sponsors. You know, they might be coming in here with the backing of the state law and the changing legal parameters, but I think there is still places within the purview of the Planning Commission and also the town to ensure that what is being proposed helps preserve the character of the town, and not is an imposition on the town, but actually enhances the town. And I truly believe that good design, good architecture, and great projects can actually enhance the town instead of being a negative. But we really need to come to a place where there's an understanding and a dialogue with the project sponsors.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go to the same balance kind of question. You had a short stint on the Planning Commission, so maybe you have an example of one that was a difficult balance, and how you thought through it. If not, just tell me in general how you, how you would do that.
Well, I would say in general, I know the town's now going through its process with the, taking another look at its subjective standards, but I do think that's going to be an important tool to refer to, to talk to project sponsors, and ensure that what they're doing is complying with the intent of what the town wants in terms of those design standards. Actually, when I was on the Planning Commission, I also served on the Historic Preservation Committee, and... Committee, and in that regard, there was a question asked earlier about how the town deals with historic preservation. I think Los Gatos does a great job with historic preservation, especially our historic districts. But at a larger, a broader level, there's been some issues with the nonhistoric district, but pre, I guess it was 1941 or 1940, houses. And oftentimes, homeowners would come in blindsided by the fact that they actually own a historic house. And it was really sad to see, you know, they'd have a full design and then they'd have to switch their vinyl windows to wood windows or something like that. And I think there's opportunities for improvement in those areas, for sure, just to make things clearer for the town's residents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here. Thanks for your interest in reapplying. How does your professional experience as an architect inform your work on the Planning Commission? Or how did it? How would it?
I think my professional experience I bring to the Planning Commission is really looking, obviously, I can, if something's conforming with the zoning, then you can't make any criticism there, but I think there is an opportunity to look at how a project or how buildings interact with the public space, right? How is the building meeting the street? What are the sidewalks like? Where are the curb cuts? What is the landscape like? So I really want to, I really want to use my professional expertise to sort of focus on that area where the private meets the public and how you can enhance that interface right there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I wanted to ask about the affordable housing. And what tools does the town have to ensure that affordable housing is actually built when there's an inclusionary requirement?
Well, I know we have the housing element as a guideline for that. When it comes to the legal details, and if something came up like that during the Planning Commission hearing, I would probably defer to the town attorney to get a better understanding myself, because I'm not necessarily a legal expert there. But my understanding is that if a project sponsor commits to a certain number of affordable housing units, they get entitled with that number, and then changing it after they've been entitled and even started construction, I'd like to understand what the town legally can do to enforce that. So I'd probably ask the town attorney what to do in that regard.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, Councilmember Risto.
Do you have any further questions? I think they've been answered. Thank you.
So that brings us to completing our panel for the Planning Commission. And like I've said earlier, if any of you are interested in serving on the CHSSC or the Personnel Board, should you not be appointed, you can just put your name on here. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. The next commission is the Complete Streets and Transportation Commission. So if you've applied for that commission, could you please come forward and have a seat? I think we have five applicants. Looks like we have five people, so we're not going to go online. So if you could just state your name first, and then we'll get started.
My name is Tom. I'm on the line. Now, just a minute.
Okay, great. So for this group, we'll again, I don't think so.
We have one online.
Oh, who's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Great, okay.
It's Sam.
Sam, okay. So we will get to your questions in a few minutes, Sam. But first, I'd like to ask Councilmember Rennie to start with Mr. T. Kanat.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll start with, what ideas would you like to see the commission explore? Kind of a wide-open question for you.
I mean, as a member, you know, basically, I'd be using the roads, the trails, mainly as a user of all these facilities, I would like to, you know, advise the commission, actually. I mean, I don't have any specific domain knowledge, I mean, domain expertise in transportation or streets commission, right? So basically, I'll be a power user of all these facilities and then want to advise the commission based upon that expertise.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for your interest and your application. So maybe a little bit more specific version of that question. The Complete Streets and Transportation Commission addresses a variety of issues, from traffic to public transportation to, you know, like you talked about trails and those sorts of things. What sort of specific aspects of Complete Streets most interests you?
Yeah, so I can tell you one specific concern, actually. For example, my kids go to high school. So when, you know, in the morning, when I drive from, you know, from the main street to the, you know, on Los Gatos Boulevard to Sunnyvale-Celadoga intersection, there are a lot of traffic jam, you know? So I thought about, you know, like, if you can provide some kind of feedback based upon experience, that will be helpful in terms of setting up the traffic lights or, you know, better way of, you know, handling the traffic, right? That'll be safer as well as convenient for the drivers as well as the kids, for them to safely navigate the streets.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I wanted to ask whether you think that e-bikes or rental scooters and the like should play a greater role in transportation options in town?
Yeah, I mean, thought about that, actually. I mean, it can bring in two different things. One could be, it could be a little dangerous for the kids who will be using that, and of course, for the users of the streets also. I've seen some really bad, you know, some situations in the trails and stuff. But that also brings in a great opportunity for transportation, right? I mean, very safe, not safe transportation, but environment-friendly transportation mode. So if the city can come up with some safe way of rolling that out on our roads as well as on the trails and stuff, that'll be extremely useful. But, you know, roll out in a safer way.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. Are you familiar with our bike and pedestrian master plan?
No.
Okay. So that was, I think, passed by the council in 2016 as a way to encourage active transportation, with the approach being to reduce the number of car trips, give people alternatives. So I was just going to ask if you're familiar with some of the Class 4 bike lanes that we've put in or ways to, you know, make it feel more comfortable for people to not be in cars? When you say you've used the trails, do you also, have you biked or walked on places where we have Class 4 bike trails?
Yes, I mean, I only had experience, you know, interacting with the e-bikers, so I don't know exactly how that is rolled out or how that is enforced, actually, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Badami.
Thank you, Mayor. On your application, you mentioned that you think you can provide positive feedback on local transportation due to your interest in road trips around the country. So can you elaborate on any road trips that you have taken that would add perspective to our commission?
Well, yeah, yeah. So, you know, like I mentioned earlier, you know, like, did a lot of, you know, like, cross-country trips here as well as in Europe. So one of the things I did was actually drive all the way from here to Boston once with my family. So I'm very interested in, you know, like, cross-country road trips in general and bring a lot of experience from, you know, like, general liking of driving on the road, actually, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the next, we'd like to ask the Vice Mayor to start with Mr. Chandler.
Thank you. In your application, you touched on a few of the specific projects, you know, the ad hoc committee reports and those sorts of things. What would you be most excited about working on, on Complete Streets?
Ken, I think that there's a lot to be excited about with the commission and their projects. Maybe the one that excites me the most is trying to reduce beach traffic. I did get to experience some of that when I first moved here to Los Gatos, and that was not too fun. I think it would be fantastic to build in more options for people to get around, especially in this local area, right? Trying to improve local transit options so that there are bike lanes that are complete so that you don't have to, for example, swerve onto the road and then interact with cars when it's super trafficked. I want to make it as attractive as possible for people to use those so that encourage to take cars less, that way there's not as many cars on the road, we don't have to deal with that traffic later. It makes it so that people don't have to worry about not being able to back out of their driveways, for example. I think it would be really good to improve those, what's the word, moments? Because, you know, I mean, the times of beach traffic is the most insane, I guess, is at the weekends when everyone else is also free. And I would like to see a Los Gatos where our residents could spend their free time not having to worry about those things.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on the beach traffic. Are you aware of some of the things that have been tried? And are there some things that you think we haven't tried that we should be exploring?
Sure. So I believe there was once a blocking of the freeway entrance that is off of, I believe it's Main Street. I don't remember exactly, but there is like a road that goes through downtown Los Gatos that everyone gets to get onto the freeway to go to Santa Cruz during the summer there. And I believe that it may have been closed or was supposed to be closed, and then the government really did not like that. The state government was not going to have it. And so I believe also there have been some proposals to, for example, negotiate with Google or some of these websites to try to stop routing traffic through Los Gatos and try to appeal to them that way, and I don't believe those have been successful. I think that I would be most excited, perhaps, for the bus-bike boulevard proposal that was put in there. I think it would be really interesting to see that put forward or at least tested, so.
Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. That was an excellent report that was done, I think. I could say a lot about it, but I'm hoping that we'll get to discuss it another time. In terms of, I know people get frustrated with cut-through traffic, and I know that when it's bad, it's really bad. On the other hand, on a day-to-day basis, our largest self-imposed traffic jam is school drop-off traffic. So can you share with me some ideas to help convince students, parents, that there are other ways to get to school besides a car?
Yeah. I mean, I remember seeing a proposal, actually, in those ad hocs of the committee reports to give free bus passes to Los Gatos High School students and staff. And if you are able to encourage students to instead take the bus to school, and if you're able to encourage staff to take the bus to school more reliably, I mean, there's no better price than free, right? And I think that it would introduce a lot of families in Los Gatos. I know that there's like a transition period for a lot of Los Gatos High School students to be driving and to always be driving to school. But I think if we can encourage them to take what could be a more convenient option, right? Especially, you know, a cheaper option serves low-income residents, of course, most profoundly, but I think it would also be useful, right? And not only, if you get those VTA-free bus passes, it doesn't only enhance transportation around Los Gatos, it also enhances transportation around the county, right? So I think that would be a really positive thing for Los Gatos residents, high school students and their families. Makes it so that those families don't have to save the car for the school commute, right? They can instead go to work in peace and not have to stress about it. I think that would be a really positive way forward.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pass. Questions have been answered. Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
Yeah, I also have enough information. I'll pass.
Okay. So we will now, I will start the next question. Sorry.
Is that good for me or for?
No, I think.
Who are we?
Let me see. No, 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 hang on a minute. I think everyone has asked a question of you.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. So we'll now move to Sam, who's online, and I will start the question.
Any thanks.
Yes?
Thank you.
Hi.
Absolutely. I cannot hear Councilmember Badami's questions, much like the last interview we mentioned.
We'll make sure to share microphones there.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. Let me just ask, should e-bikes or rental scooters or things like that play a greater role in transportation options in town?
It's a great question. I think the safety element is some, one point that we should really consider a little bit more carefully. I've been noticing a lot of kids really don't quite abide by the guidelines of the town, especially on Santa Cruz, the main avenue. In certain parts of town, I think that makes a lot of sense. I've lived in cities like New York City, and obviously, San Francisco has the same rules. Bike rentals make a lot of sense for congestion. So where we have bike lanes, I think it's a really good idea. But if it's something like downtown where there isn't much space for e-bikes and there's a lot of conflict between cars and passengers or, you know, people walking or e-bikes, we may have to think about the way it's implemented. But I think there is a space for them on certain avenues like Los Gatos Boulevard or, you know, Winchester.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer, because it sounds like you're starting to delve into things I like to think about, like multimodal transportation and where it makes the most sense and how we can accommodate that. So I agree with you, downtown is pretty congested, it's probably best walked. In terms of other areas, like putting a network together, do you see parts of our community where we can do more to enhance walking and biking?
Absolutely. I mean, I know some towns have done really well in blocking certain streets. I know from a Highway 17 perspective, it's very difficult to block Main Street, you know, in downtown, but we could certainly create more spaces alongside the restaurants where there could be walking. We did take away quite a bit of space for parking, so a lot has to probably be renegotiated with the restaurants and town. But I would, I can see certain parts of town where we could certainly add walking spaces.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. No passing on this one. So can you elaborate on any thoughts to mitigate beach traffic?
You know, having lived in towns like London and New York, I really find the congestion pricing model very interesting. If, for example, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, we know we're going to get a lot of beach traffic and people will come through town, maybe there is an extra price that they have to pay. I know it's a little bit controversial, but it has worked quite well in towns like London. So, you know, I would say maybe something like that. The other element may be pooling a lot more. Uber has a pooling option. I know Rideshare has worked quite well in many other cities around the world where, you know, people could actually get in, three, four people who don't know each other could get into a car and go down a particular path. There could be a designated route for those. So for especially people like us who don't really need to use highways to get to the beach, maybe we could actually create a better transportation model for residents.
Thank you, Sam.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. So you kind of started to answer this question. You've listed lots of work experience, in-town experience, and other place lived experience. Can you tell me about how you think you can leverage all of these experiences to help the commission?
Absolutely. I mean, I have, what you're referring to, maybe some of the board roles I've had on nonprofit, nonprofit organizations, for-profit organizations. I really try to take a more strategic approach. I have no problems being an operator of projects, but I think where we really need to be as commissioners is just to take in all the information, listen to the different stakeholders, and come up with a very compelling, practical plan. And I would take that approach, just really try to listen to different people coming through town, using some of the trails or roads. I mean, I'm a very active biker. I walk the whole town with my dog every single day, so, you know, I really do have a lot of experience. I see the potholes and the issues with e-bikers myself. So I think between lived experience and what I've done with other organizations being on boards, I would just try to incorporate. on boards, I would just try to incorporate all of that into a good plan, really try to get the right solutions quoted and implemented.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your application. I don't think congestion pricing is controversial, I think it's a good idea. You currently work in philanthropy, which I think is an interesting, you know, background for this role. And so I'm curious if you've seen or had any experience with municipalities leveraging philanthropy to, you know, support some of the exciting projects we're trying to work on?
For sure. I must just put a disclaimer, I work with a philanthropist who's more focused on healthcare at the moment, and before that I did a lot of educational work, so not as much transportation. But certainly, I have a lot of access from that perspective. I, probably I could come up with very interesting ideas just to, you know, bring to the commission.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So next, we'll move on to Ms. Stafford, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Aristo to start the questions there.
Lauren, right? Okay. So I guess similar question. Can you explain to me like your thoughts on active transportation or ways to encourage more walking and biking throughout town, which would reduce congestion?
Yes. No. Okay. No, I love, I love the idea of the five-year active transportation plan. I will say, I think one of the most overlooked thing when it comes to active transportation and walking is safety and lighting. I'm a very active person when it comes to walking around downtown and to and from my apartment, and I think that the town is lacking in lighting. And that can be applied in, for biking, for walking, for people with disabilities. I think it's commonly overlooked.
Thank you.
For Badami.
Thank you. So you likely walk downtown in the summer months and see the gridlock. So do you have any thoughts on how to mitigate beach traffic?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I also agree, I don't think congestion pricing is that political. I current, my current profession is electronic toll collection, so I work with, you know, Fast Track and all the bridges. So I do think that that is a solution to the traffic. Obviously, you would have to talk to the members of the community to see if that's something that they're interested in, and there's ways to work around so that they wouldn't be charged. But it was also mentioned by Nigel here, the negotiations with Google. I think that that is the real issue here, is that people are being detoured through downtown and that it should be stopped.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give you an opportunity to further connect your work and life experiences on how that can, what that can bring to the commission.
Sure. Yeah, I'm a professional licensed civil engineer with a specialization in transportation. And with that, I've dealt with, you know, policy planning, design, signing and striping design, as well as traffic studies. So throughout the lifecycle of all different projects, I have experience with. So I think I can carry over a lot of that experience with, you know, your approach to most of these things, which is laying out, you know, what are the financials for all these projects? Every transportation project has a capital aspect to it, has a community aspect, it has a stakeholder aspect to it. So laying out everything onto the table for every decision when it comes to transportation, I think is important. Another part of my career is data analytics, and I think unfortunately, we're at a time period in transportation where there's an ever-growing population and there's too many constraints to just expand the roads or, you know, so we have to approach it from, I think, a data perspective, as well as, you know, efficiency and safety more than just expanding the roadways.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest. So you just talked a little bit about your professional experience. How do you think you would handle dealing with, you know, the constraints of the commission and that it's an advisory body? You know, as a transportation engineer, you have very tangible, you know, deliverable outcomes versus an advisory body, you're, you know, sort of providing high-level guidance. How would you deal with sort of the different role that the commission would play?
Yeah, no, it is striking that balance between having an engineering mind and looking at like what the best solution is versus what the, what serves the community and the preservation of the town. So I think, I think it all comes back to talking to the community, laying out all of the constraints, the financial constraints, the physical constraints, and really just, you know, thinking of the best solution. But I think a big part of that, too, is looking at the details, reading all the materials, seeing where the issues are, and just being very thorough with your decisions and advisory.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I could ask you, how can older adults obtain better mobility in town?
Yeah. No, I was thinking about this while waiting here. With the construction as well, that's a big issue. I think the ADA does do a great job of outlining the requirements for a city to implement for people with disabilities and on the older population. So I think we just need to be thorough when it comes to making sure that everything that, all the different improvements, as well as all the temporary things going on with construction are to standard, and we're listening to people when they, when they call in and have these concerns.
Thank you. So Mr. Suzuki, if Councilmember Badami could start, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Suzuki, if reappointed, what ideas would you like to see the commission explore that they haven't already done?
Sure. So currently, as I, at this very moment, we are, I'm currently serving on a task force along with the Community Health and Senior Services Commission to look at transportation options for seniors, additional transportation options for seniors. We're thinking of looking into additional options to the, to supplement the previous findings on, for example, microtransit. So we had this vendor give presentations named VIA, which would basically link people to existing transit services. It's basically a rideshare program. And we don't want to just look at one vendor, we want to look at what currently other successful models, what other cities are currently doing, and which ones, which elements we might want to adopt into our potential, of course, in an advisory capacity, into a potential model where we can best connect people, including seniors, into the public transportation network. So that's one example.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
Well, that was kind of my question. So I'll just give you an open-ended, what else would you like to elaborate on?
Sure thing. I would like to continue with the work on the Beach Traffic Ad Hoc Committee, which, and the VTA Bus Pass Ad Hoc Committee. I spearheaded both of those efforts, and both of the ad hoc committees sunset earlier in June. It kind of heartens me to hear that people seem to like some of the ideas in those reports. But I honestly, I, after having spent, you know, a few hundred hours, you know, certain, doing a lot of research for those ad hoc committees, I still felt like there was a lot more to do. A lot of potential policy options that have, that have not yet been researched thoroughly by previous commissions in Los Gatos, and I would like to look at them. I would like to see the literature and see any sort of ideas that might be viable for the town of Los Gatos.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest in reapplying. As you know, part of commission work is, you know, having realistic expectations and trying to, you know, work within the confines of the commission. What do you think are some of the most achievable goals the commission would have for this coming year?
Sure thing. One of the most achievable is to preserve that relation, that existing relationship with VTA. More specifically, in the process of drafting that VTA Bus Pass Ad Hoc Committee report, that one of the policy options that was, that was approved as a recommendation to the council was the establishment of a smart pass program. And I think one thing that the commission can directly do in implementing this smart pass program, which, as Nigel alluded to earlier, would basically provide free bus and light rail services to all the students and staff at Los Gatos High School, would be for members of the commission to continually, continue to preserve that channel of communication with the relevant stakeholders at VTA, to make sure that that policy is pushed through.
Thank you.
Of course, with the, as an advisory committee, and of course, with the approval of the council.
Thank you. Maybe as a follow-up to that, I don't know how many hundred students there are at the high school, how would, who would pay and how would free bus passes be funded?
So there are a few potential options. The first is, Measure B is a potential funding source. And the reason why I'm aware of this is while drafting that VTA Bus Pass Ad Hoc Committee report, I had direct communications with VTA. We set up a few meetings, and one of the elements of that process was they actually asked to see the report before it had been sent over to the commission. Of course, I was speaking in a completely advisor, like, not in my, I did not have my commission hat on. I was very clear with VTA that I'm not speaking for the town of Los Gatos. However, they did want to see the report because they were very excited about the policy, the policy that were included in the report, most excited about the smart pass at Los Gatos High School. And when they were reviewing the section on Measure B potentially being a funding source for the, this initiative, they, they did not provide, they did not provide a correction to that. So that indicates that it is a potential funding source. The second is, the town could potentially pay for it. The dollar amount for the six-month pilot project would be about $20,000, like $20,500, which I think for bang for buck is worth it for the town of Los Gatos. That's what, one of the things the report states pretty unequivocally. And lastly, potentially, there could be a split funding agreement between the district and the town of Los Gatos. Ultimately, that this is, this is up for the town council to decide.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see, we have, no, we still need to go to Councilmember Aristo on this.
I don't have any further questions. I've read the reports, we've discussed them, and I appreciate all the work you've done so far. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating. And again, if you're interested in serving on one of these other commissions, should you not be appointed, just please write your name down here. Okay? Thank you all. And I'd like to ask the final group before we go to recess to come up, and that's the Parks and Sustainability applicants. And so if you could join us up here, please, I think we have four applicants. And if you could state your name, please? Thank you. And so for this panel, we'd like to get started with Councilmember Rennie and Mr. Mapara.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Mapara, you're clearly an incumbent on the, on the commission. How's the commission doing? Would you say keep doing the same, or do you have ideas for new things in the future you want the commission to achieve?
Yeah, so the commission, one of the things I would say we made progress on is the pickleball. It has been an ongoing issue, and I think when it started first, like, a couple of years ago, there was a lot of tension between the two sides, but then there have been more cooperative and understanding of, like, over the last couple of years. So recently, there were some challenges, but I still think that it's going in the right direction. As far as what we could do better is like, I think my previous meet, like, last meeting that we had, it was really helpful to kind of get an understanding of the, from the town side, like, we can maybe give a more, I would say, strategic guidance from our side. I think we have been more reactive than proactive, which we can, I think we can do a better job of. So I would say, like, going forward, I would try to push that, that let's give some ideas, like, something, something that is even out of our, like, you know, maybe something more aggressive, so that depending on what you guys can do or what the town can do, it can help us.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you for your interest in continuing to serve. So I think last year, the Parks Commission transitioned to be the Parks and Sustainability Commission. Do you have any ideas for implementing the sustainability piece of the commission?
So as far as that goes, we did update the, like, our mission. If you look at it right now, it's more updated. After that, I would say something that we have talked about is kind of making it more inclusive, just in general, or more equitable, just so that we are catering to different, you know, diverse group of people. So as far as, yeah, I mean, in particular, I can't really think of one right now, but...
That's okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. You've probably considered some of this, but are there any improvements to our parks that could benefit older adults?
Yes, I would say on an ongoing basis, this is a challenging part, but ongoing continuous maintenance, I would say, is something that we can work on. So I've been hiking on the Jones Trail lately, and, I mean, at least based on that experience, I mean, there is, there are some, some maintenance going on, but I think we can do a better job. Just overall, having a budget, I know, like, we are, we are tight on budget, but I think that's another thing that we can work on, so that we can increase our budget for maintenance, and maybe that can help address those issues.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Aristo.
Thank you. I thought the Parks Commission, I think one of the things in the future will be working on a Parks Master Plan, so that we would have plans for if and when money becomes available, how to roll it out. Can you tell me what's been discussed around that? Or what your views would be, like, what that could serve?
Yeah, again, I would say there's a 10-year plan that I think we have talked about, I don't know if that's at the town level, right, that a 10-year plan where we can ask for capital budget. So I think I would say that would be, yeah, I would say budget would be like first priority on my, from my end. As far as specifics, I haven't...
Can you interrupt? So what would you want the budget for? Like, what are, can you give me like a specific example at either all the parks or a specific park where an improvement could be made that can't right now?
So again, I mean, I would say pickleball is like a big, big thing right now, so I think, just as a commission, we didn't know how, how big or what the potential it is, and I think even going forward, we don't know how, how much it's going to grow. So I think for those sort of things, we can have a budget. I don't have an exact amount, but I think there can be some discussions that we can do, and kind of look forward as to what we can, you know, maybe the next five to 10 years, what do we see, the trends, what other towns are doing? And based on that, I would say we would request for some more budget, capital budget.
Councilmember Badami.
I'll pass. Questions answered. Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
So my favorite question is that, no, I've already, I've already asked this one, this applicant.
Thank you. Then Vice Mayor for Mark Richard, please.
Thank you for your interest in the commission. What aspects of the commission would you be most interested in addressing, from parks, sustainability, you know, et cetera?
I find it all quite interesting, actually. I do, I do love our parks, I have to say that. We're in them every day, and I do love them. I love, I love the idea of being able to help improve, or at least continue, seeing more and more activity within the parks, you know, whether that's just through encouraging use of the parks, which benefits people, especially in a healthy standpoint, you know, getting out, you know, seeing how beautiful they are, enjoying the parks. But that also includes making sure that we are maintaining safety within the parks. The parks need to be safe, and they need to be safe in all ways. You know, they have to be safe, you know, your personal being, feeling safe and feeling like you can... like you can be in the park, as well as what's in the park needs to be safe and maintained. You know, those areas I find, you know, very valuable to the town, so that we have these parks, and we have these parks, you know, forever.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a view about what, what Los Gatos should focus on regarding our parks in response to climate change over the next 10, 10-plus years?
Yeah, so, when it comes to climate change, some of the greatest things we can do, of course, is to try to keep the parks, you know, as maintainable, you know, being able to maintain what's in the parks, you know, at the lowest cost to the climate. Not really easy when you have very natural parks. But of course, nature sustains itself, which is nice. I think we definitely would do well to make sure they're maintained aesthetically, but that includes keeping them clean, clean of things that could cause problems with fire or anything like that. So having some systems in place that can help maintain the parks, that reduce the risks that we find come about through climate change within the environment.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Okay, thank you. Kind of teeing off that, you know, a lot of our parks just have huge rolling fields of grass, which is probably not the most useful for water, but is a great play turf. Do you have thoughts about, you know, around the edges or in places where it doesn't have to be active? Should we have more native plantings? Or do you have thoughts about how the parks can transform and adapt over time to be more resilient?
I do think native planting is valuable, you know, trying to, trying to remove invasive, invasive species, species that, you know, are not indigenous to the area. Seeing that, I've seen that being done in other communities. It's not, it's not an easy process, it takes time, but it, it can, over time, work, and you can return the environment to how it was intended to be naturally. Our climate, as it has changed, and it continues to evolve, what once was, you know, suitable 100 years ago may not be suitable now. So some of those considerations, which would require some consulting possibly to figure that out, would certainly be involved. But again, I think that's a very long process that would take some time to, to really get a handle on and take the right steps, so it's done right, and has to always be evolving. It can't, it's not necessarily a one and done. It has to be looked at over time, and as time passes, you may make another decision that, you know, doesn't raise necessarily what you've done, but maybe improves upon it.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you for your application. So can you name your favorite park and explain why that was your choice?
Yeah, that's a good one. You know, I do love them all. If you had asked me this question before the pandemic, I would have told you, you know, up in the open spaces around, you know, Jones Trail and that sort of thing, I was up there every single day. But I've really fallen in love with Vezona and the Creek Trail. I love being on the Creek Trail. I live real close to Bachman Park, so I love that park as well. It's wonderful to sit in, it's quiet, it's peaceful. I love the, the connection, you know, the walking connection, you know, on the path there. But I think, right now, I'm most in love with Vezona. I just, I love, I love the beauty of the lake, I love the fields. It's a beautiful park, and, and the trail itself is a magnificent resource.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rennie.
So, being last in line, I don't think you've really answered this yet, so I'll ask my favorite question, is how, how do you see tying your work, personal, and in-town experiences, and how, what that can bring to the commission?
Sure. You know, I think my experiences, one of the things that I, that I've gained through my experiences is the ability to really gather information, pull ideas together, you know, pull different people together to try to come up with solutions. You know, these kinds of, these kinds of, of things don't really, you know, they're not unilateral, you know, they're not always just, you know, a couple of people, but oftentimes, you need a lot of input from various people to understand how really to proceed. I, I think I'm well-skilled at, at being able to do that, and to see all options and all sides. And again, as an advisor, you know, part of an advisory committee, you know, I would hope that my ability to see all the sides and to really think critically about them and understand them would help me, you know, make the best, you know, bring the best information to the council.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lundberg, I'm wondering if you could describe any services or facilities that are lacking from the Los Gatos parks?
I would, I would think about maybe ways to combine the parks with services that could pull in more people to use the parks. Simple example, maybe, maybe not a good one, but what if we have an espresso food truck or espresso truck on, you know, Sunday mornings, strategically placed, then people can go for a walk and get their coffee, or... Maybe things of, thinking a little bit outside of the box of, you know, how can we increase the usage and the enjoyment of the parks? I don't think I have a strong opinion of particular, like, hey, we, we're lacking X, Y, and C, but I would, I would be interested in thinking a little bit, brainstorming with the commission on what are some ways, you know, new things we can do that would just make the parks more, more enjoyable and used more.
Councilmember Risto.
Maybe you don't have a specific idea, but you mentioned, you know, wanting to have Los Gatos be a role model for recreation in the parks, or to, you know, improve recreational experiences. Do you have a specific type of recreation that you have in mind? Like, you yourself, what would you like to see a park offer more of?
I, I think we have a good variety today, in fact. I mean, between, I was just thinking about favorite parks when the question was up earlier, between Warster Park, which is close to where I am, like, a little hidden park that, you know, no one knows about, and, you know, I enjoy it almost daily because it's close where I live, all the way to Vezona and San Jose and so forth. So I, I think, I, I can't come up with a kind of specific idea, but I think maybe looking, looking across what we have, our inventory today, so to speak, and see what we have. And I'm an engineer by training, and I would probably kind of take, hey, can we get some feedback from the community? How can we do a survey? Rather than just, you know, if I have a random idea, it may not be valid for the communities. I would probably take more of a, get some input from the community, and maybe that's been done already, I don't know, and sort of sift through what are some viable ideas that we should look at.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. So I was going to ask that same question again, name your favorite park, because it looks like you've visited all of them, and it wasn't clear if, if Warster Park is your favorite one because it's so close to you, but if it's other than that one, what would be your favorite park if that's not your favorite, or if it is your favorite?
Yeah, I mean, the reason we moved here in 2001, it's not 24 years ago, was because my wife took me down here, we were, lived in Palo Alto, and took me down here, parked on Main, on Main Street, unpacked our bikes, and we biked San Jose. And that was the reason we actually moved here. So that's still my favorite park, because it's, you know, has great views, and it's large, and you can bike, and you can hike and walk, and so that's my favorite park, but my, my favorite secret park is Warster.
Okay. Thanks for sharing this secret.
Councilmember Rennie.
So I'm going to throw a little curveball, I guess, instead of my standard question. You mentioned getting more people to come to the parks and use the parks. One of the challenges that you'll find, you don't have people coming to the commission too often, but there are issues like pickleball, and you'll find that people that move next to the parks think they own the park, and the idea of food truck or whatever you mentioned, bringing more people to the park, you might find extremely unpopular. So as a commission member, you may have some of these difficult things come before you. Do you have ideas of how you work past this idea that a park really is, belongs to the whole town, not the neighbors, but the neighbors may become very squeaky wheels on some ideas?
Yeah, I mean, I've certainly, I've read the commission protocols on the pickleball issues, and I've got friends who are closer to the issues than I am, but, I mean, I think it's important that neighbors can enjoy their properties without nuisance that is above and beyond what you could expect living next to a park or close to a park, whether it's parking or noise or whatever it may, may be. At the same time, the parks are here for everybody, so in the community, so you should, in my opinion, we should try to make them accessible and, and be used and, and so forth. So I think it's a balancing act. I think you've got to hear all sides. I'm, like I said, I'm an engineer by training, so I would kind of try to take in all aspects and look at the data and opinions and, and be balanced about it. I don't think there is a, I think there is, I think the method creates the answer in, in most things. That's kind of how I approach things, that the one thing you can control is your method of looking at something, not necessarily outcome. So I think by applying a sound method of looking at the issue, incorporating opportunity for feedback, and then ultimately take a balanced decision is kind of where the best you can do.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you for your interest. You shared in your application that you haven't had much time to get engaged in the local community until now. What made you decide to, to apply to the Parks and Sustainability Commission as, as a way to get involved?
I love the outdoors. I've been working in sustainability in a decade, you know, very different aspects than I'm sure the commission will get involved in. But it just felt like from, we were down in the library, and we saw, you know, the call for applicants, and this is really the only commission that I feel compelled to join, because I feel I have an interest and I have something I can bring. I'm involved in our community, we have a second home in Tahoe, and I'm involved in that community from a fire safety standpoint, so we sort of do a lot of community work to keep that community safe from a fire standpoint, and, yeah, I just feel that this is aligned with my interests and some of my professional background.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Richard, Councilmember Risto, if you could have your question, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your application. And as I was reading it, you know, it, it reminded me that our parks, some of the parks that have been brought up don't even belong to the town of Los Gatos, so you actually named a lot of good parks here, and you mentioned trails. I think the only real trail system we have is in Belgados, but can you describe, like, what you like about that park? Or, you know, how, I know that the Parks, the Parks Commission has struggled with how to improve some of the trails in our parks, so do you have any ideas about that?
That's a great question, because when I think of the park you just mentioned and trails, like, how to get there, who knows about it? And that's, some of the, the special character is exploring and finding out these neat green spaces that are in your midst. And so this balance between maintaining green spaces and these really nice places to access, like, it's, it's kind of difficult to even know about it, and it's kind of, it's like a cute experience. And so you wouldn't want to put a giant sign up with the light to say, "Walk here," but getting the word out so that it really is treasured broadly is something that I think been thinking about, some of the opportunities to get out and about, or to get dropped off and be able to sit at a bench, is, is sort of that, thinking through how to balance access, and I think you had mentioned trying to be more proactive instead of reactive. It's really hard with a commission like this, because there are emerging issues that you need to address, but then sort of this planning for how to make the most of a place where Los Gatos, I mean, it is in part defined by the beautiful green hills, these amazing community spaces where you can go to events, and then these small, like, kind of special secret spots, or like a meandering trail where it just is like a special urban experience. So I think there's a balance in, in maintaining, but really trying to plan longer term, or maybe even creating more, like, kind of secret trails, so that you can feel like you're in nature when you're also in your neighborhood, or got dropped off somewhere to go maybe to someone else's neighborhood that you got to uncover, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. If appointed, what ideas would you like to see the commission explore?
So I think, if appointed, I would love to see the commission explore some ideas around how to really make parks attractive and maintain them. So that comes to this sort of vision, or where are we headed in terms of green spaces that can be responsibly maintained, in terms of water, and, or a really experience that sort of is true to the local environment, where you see nature, you're, you're looking at nature, and you're outdoors, but there's this balance between, it's coherent and feels like this makes sense, whether it's, as you had mentioned, the native plants, or something special, that maybe it's, it's like, part of the park was created to provide an education opportunities for the kids that went, like, touch grass and see nature, or if someone is walking slowly through the park, that it, it's sort of got some depth to it. So I think that's for, maybe trying to think through some ideas that the commission could explore around really developing, like, beauty in a way that's, it's, it's already right there in front of us, but maybe taking it a little further and kind of planning longer term around how to have these, like, special experiences when you're in each of the parks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
I'll go back to my favorite question. With all of your work experience, life experiences, and, and experiences in Los Gatos, how would you bring those to the commission? How would they benefit the commission?
Sure, so I start my workday, Monday through Friday, by riding on the Creek Trail. And I go to work, and I collect my thoughts, and I see all the different people that are using the trails, and it's, it's what inspired me. You didn't ask me which my favorite park was yet, but that's the park that inspired me to, to, to jump in the fray and really think of how I could give back and, and put some of my experience and aptitude to sort of like a public or a civic, just helping out the commission, so that the council has that input from the public. So a lot of what I do day-to-day is, I'm the general manager for our company, so I'm not out interacting with the public, but I am in a lot of meetings and really listening to try and support other people. So I think with, and the team that I lead at a company to succeed, and so I think as part of the commission, I'd apply that depth, to really trying to understand, how can we, how can we go for it? How can we really achieve? And, and so that's where I would try to bring that, you know, sort of like the innovation or getting out the next big product release, that that's what I do nine to five, to, to bring sort of that, that energy or that mindset of doing the best we can to really bring, bring concrete ideas, you know, sort of bring projects to a point where it's helpful for you all. So that's my work-life, I suppose, how, how I try to give input, and I do have some background in that. I moved to Los Gatos not that long ago, it's just over 12 years, but it's such a special place, that's kind of my antidote to work. So I really want to help everyone who's here to continue love living here.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you for your interest. You talked a little bit about, you know, habitat and native plants and, and, you know, pollinators and all those things, and I think that's one of the areas where we could arguably do better in our parks, and sort of, you know, expanding that. Do you have any thoughts on how to incorporate more native, you know, sort of infrastructure? Do you have any thoughts on how to incorporate more native, you know, sort of infrastructure or native plants into our parks and ecosystem?
Sure, so the question on how to do it, I think some of it is what would be really special for visitors? And so by, maybe it's sort of a combination of opportunities for education or just sort of awareness around, if you plant these kind of bushes, then this kind of insect might come visit, and then you might notice the squirrel run by with this funny red fruit that's about, they sort of just kind of bring it to life. Some of the stories that are easy to tell, because if you go into the forest, you would see them, so maybe just sort of like a micro version of that to, even though if you're looking at the hills, I mean, this is sort of a small-scale version. But I do think it's sometimes difficult with native plants, because you want to maintain them in a way that isn't too burdensome for the people responsible. So not, we don't all agree in thumbs, and making sure that there's a lot going on for the staff and just in terms of the cost. So I'm not, it can be something special, it can be bringing like a rock in, that's something really cool that everyone can really understand, like this is more about a geology display, but sort of like a mix of education and just really bringing to life the landscape, I think, in ways that really are storytelling-driven, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the commission has recently had its mandate changed from just parks to Parks and Sustainability. So what more could be done to further the sustainability mandate of the commission, not necessarily in the context of parks?
Well, to the extent that thinking through sustainability, some of it is just really understanding what we're spending, whether it's energy or water, and just really having that awareness. I think if there's more that we can measure and just be accountable for, and if there's goals to set around doing better around less water, or making sure that the water's being spent in a, used in a really thoughtful way, is, I think with sustainability, it's sort of tied to accountability. If we're going to invest in, I'm just waxing on about these really cool new vegetation storytelling displays, that we would want to be very transparent about how it relates to the goals of spend and really making sure that they endure. So I think with sustainability, it's a mix of being transparent, and the commission could help in terms of there's numbers to crunch, I love data, so if there's reports that exist, you know, really I'd love to sort of help understand where we're at, and then help with goal-setting or suggestions, really, for the council's consideration when it comes to what are we doing and how are we going to get there, what'll it cost, and really being accountable along the way.
Great, thank you. I think we've asked a lot of questions, and so if any of you would like to volunteer for a different commission, should you not be appointed to this one, please put your name down. And we will take a recess now, and I'd like to reconvene at 7:15. So there's a 10-minute recess. We're back in session, and so now I would invite the library board applicants to come up and have a seat, please. Thank you. And do we have some people online for the library board?
Yes, we do.
How many?
Two.
Two, okay. Excellent. So if you could just state your name, please?
Sure.
Great. And the ones online, please?
Hi, my name's Abby Bramley.
Great.
Bernadette White.
Okay, so we'll start with Ms. Bramley, and if, let's see, Councilmember Bodami could get started, if you have some things you'd like to interview Ms. Bramley about.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry?
Which way?
Okay. Hello, there you are.
Hi.
All right, so you currently serve on the library board. What other or new ideas would you like to see the commission explore that you haven't done already?
So I want to commend the library director, because I think so many of the wonderful things that the library should be doing, it is already doing. And I think one of the challenges that I would admit to bringing new ideas to the table is the recognition that they're having to scale back a lot of their services and a lot of their resources and a lot of the things that they're doing, just because of budgetary considerations. And so I would say what I'd love to see the library do is just keep delivering on what it's been doing to date. I think they've done a phenomenal job of being a central resource for the town, of providing services and programs to people, and I think they're punching well above their weight class. So while I have some new ideas, I have so much respect for the way that the library staff is already balancing the many different staff is already balancing the many different ideas people have. If you saw the results of the most recent survey that the library did in the town, people have so many suggestions. Some of them are already implemented, maybe folks just don't know they're there. Some of them are wonderful ideas to explore, some of them may not appeal to as wide of an audience, but I think the library team across the board is doing a great job of taking all of the different ideas that are already circling around there into account and really focusing on the ones that are having the biggest impact for the community already.
Thank you, Abby.
Councilmember Rennie.
That was kind of my question, but maybe I'll expand it a little bit and say, which were your favorite ideas? Why?
So, I absolutely love the programs that are being offered at the library. I think they do a great job of appealing to the target demographics and ages of people that are using the library most often. So, people who are like early learners, they have some wonderful reading programs, and I see them expanding that. There's some wonderful ideas about offering those more frequently at different times and in different languages, and so it definitely is striking a balance between offering these books, services, early reader programs in different languages to make everybody, you know, across the community feel welcome and included. I think the library does a wonderful job at that, and striking the balance between which ones are going to be used most often. So, I would say the ideas really circle a lot around programs and around resources, and frequently it's a budgetary question, but I love what they're doing to offer a lot of resources for people who are learning how to become more tech savvy, people who are re-entering the job force, or who maybe don't know how to have, how to find a job. They're doing really great things for people who are looking for social services and resources and don't know where to connect to them. So, the more they can continue to provide these really core resources, I think they're filling a really critical gap in town that isn't necessarily, people always know they can go there and start there, and if the resource isn't offered there, the staff will help connect them to it. So, those are the things that come to mind immediately.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. You touched on a very important part of the library for the next year or two, which is the resource constraints, and so do you have any particular ideas for how to, you know, leverage existing resources or pursue any sort of creative projects to, that might not be very resource or dollar intensive, but could, you know, provide impact?
Well, I really love right now the partnership between Friends of the Library and a lot of what they're doing, you know, they have this book sale available, and they're really the ones who are funding most of the library's programming. So I think that's an example of a creative idea that exists somewhat outside of the library's official funding resources that we could do more with. I think there's a lot of opportunities there to bring the community together, and I would love to see more of that explored, I think, in terms of budget constraints. I'm just trying to think of the best way to phrase this. I think the library's doing so much, and we could advocate more for the community to know and understand, just from a, you know, a perspective of being involved there, just how much the library offers for people. So I think they have a lot of resources that people don't even know are there, and I think more, I almost want to say marketing, I put my marketing hat on because that's what I spend most of my time doing professionally, but really connecting people to the resources that exist already that are maybe being less utilized, when we don't necessarily have the ability to broaden the print materials in circulation, for example, or the digital licenses we might have for those online references and things like that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to stay a little bit on the topic of the budget constraints, since you're on the Board. What are some cuts to services that you are most concerned about, ones, you know, actual cuts that have happened?
I personally am a book lover, and I know the book wholesale distributor, provider, Baker &amp; Taylor that the library uses has just gone under. And so we will be one of many, many public libraries across the country who's going to be needing to find a new way to source its new print materials, and so that's going to be a lengthy and expensive undertaking, and that's really a challenging position for the library to be in. So I anticipate that would mean delays for people getting new print materials, whether it's things that people at the high school need for their, you know, test prep education, or it's just the bestseller that the book club wants to read and can't necessarily get 30 copies of in a quick way, and that's a really great way that the community comes together and connects. So, I come back to books often, but that's going to be disruptive, I would say, and one of those things that's completely out of the library's control. I commend them for all they're doing to get ahead of that challenge, but that will continue to be a challenge, for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto.
I don't have any questions, I think they were answered, and it sounds like you've got a love for the Library Board and a lot of great experience, and explained things that I didn't even know, so thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll go to Ms. White and Councilmember Rennie to get that started.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. White, I'll go to my favorite question. So how will your work, life, and Los Gatos experiences help you, or how can you bring those to the Commission to benefit the Commission?
Sure, I think one of the things that, so I have a background in philanthropy, I currently work out of high school, so I think both of those things really can come together to support the work I would do as a Commissioner. Particularly, my background in philanthropy can help with finding alternative sources for funding, because right now, the Friends of the Library, the funding is restricted only to programs at the library, does not help support operating costs or the purchasing or licensing of materials, and so it's helping to explore what might be some grant opportunities or other funding opportunities available for the Los Gatos Library to help bridge some of those budgetary gaps. And then, of course, for the high school side of things, I know how important it is to have a safe space for high schoolers after school, and, you know, as Abby mentioned, one of the other things that did come up is if a lot of these budgetary concerns continue, there might be other hard decisions being made, and that may relate to hours that the library is open, and what is the impact that has for teens and high schoolers is something that's of concern to me.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in continuing to serve on the Library Board. What made you want to re-up on the Board?
I think, to me, I really just love the library, it is such an asset to the town of Los Gatos, and it is a small and mighty library, yet provides so much to the community, whether it is the children's space at the library with so many interactive displays for children alongside with the books, and then, of course, the books for adults, and then all the amazing program that also happens there at the library. I also would be joking if I didn't say Cappy Bar, but, you know, that's a joke at the library right now about the Cappy Bars.
I'm so bummed I miss the Cappy Bars, thank you.
Me too.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to ask about, what areas have you observed as potential new focus areas for our library?
Yeah, I think one of the things that I would love to see more of at the library, particularly, I'm a working parent, and I do know a lot of the children's programming at the library happens during the day, or it's early in the afternoon where it could be really hard for a working parent to attend. So one of the things I would love to see is more weekend programming, so kids who have working parents can also attend. But I also would love to see how we can also bridge some of these generational gaps in the users of the library. You know, we have a lot of seniors who use the library, as well as high schoolers, and are there programs that could be put in place to bridge the gap between patrons and have some of those exchanges between, you know, those two constituents of the library?
Thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask that question, so I guess I'll ask, in terms of something new that was added during your previous term, I mean, what is something that was added that you feel like has really been successful that you're excited about?
I think, yeah, I think there's really been a big focus on making sure we firm up the library's policies. You know, in past surveys, there have been points of contention around DEI, unfortunately, and so I really have appreciated the library's stance to double down on DEI and the importance that has to a space like a library where it is all about learning and knowledge, and so I have really appreciated the work that Ryan and his team have been doing to double down on those things, but also just the work that the library's been doing just to address some of the past concerns that have come up in the surveys, whether it's about our book retention policy, or it is about, you know, lost and found policy, just so that we have clarity for library patrons, and they have a better understanding of the different policies and procedures at the library.
Those are important, I appreciate that, thanks.
Councilmember Badami.
I'm going to pass, questions answered, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and so now I'd like to ask Ms. Beck and Vice Mayor if you have some questions.
Yes, thank you, thank you for your interest. What makes you interested in serving on the Library Board?
It's good now? Okay. So, yeah, I saw this opportunity, and it was something that I was super interested in. I actually worked in libraries down in Southern California for about eight years, and before that was a patron of the library, spent a lot of time there, I've always been an avid reader, but for me, growing up, too, it was always a space that provided an escape for me, that was safe and calm, and so when I had the opportunity to start working there, I jumped at it and stayed on for eight years between two different libraries, had the opportunity to work in a lot of different departments, and worked in the back office, helped with a lot of programming and just different, got to really see how libraries work, and so, yeah, through that, when my kids were little, we spent lots of time at the library. When I relocated to a new state, didn't know anybody, it was a really important part of our life, gave me a place to connect with other moms, I was a stay-at-home mom at the time, and meet some other people, and feel like I was a part of the community right away, provided resources, and then when my son here was in high school, when he was using the library, I knew it was a place where he was safe, and so as a parent, that was important to me, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wonder if you could describe your personal use of the Los Gatos Library and what your experience has been?
Yeah, absolutely. So like I said, you know, my children used it when they were in high school, and so as a parent, definitely was important in that regard. I have used it to borrow materials, both back when it was able to borrow online, I was able to do that, the e-reader books, but then now I've borrowed a lot of print materials, and I definitely am looking to get more involved in the library and, you know, learn more of the programs that are offered here. I do think it is such a vital part of a community, as both Abby and Ms. White spoke to, just, you know, the range of services that it provides to the community, I think are so important from, you know, little kids all the way through to seniors.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a great book called Palaces of the People, and it talks about libraries as kind of a resiliency, a community resiliency space. So, it sounds like, I mean, you utilize the library a lot, are there aspects that you find more favorable or things that you would like to see increased, or is it perfect the way it is?
Great question. I know even, you know, 20 years ago, when I was working in libraries, budget was always an issue, and I went to the last Board meeting for the library here, and of course, budget's a concern, even more so now. And so, yeah, in a perfect world, there's so many things that it would be wonderful to offer, but there's always that balance of how do you do that with the budget that you have to work with. I do, my sense from attending that meeting was that the Library Director and the staff do an amazing job with what they have, and I know Abby spoke to that. And so I think what they're doing is amazing. Of course, there's always more that, you know, you can try to find, that you can offer and that you can do, and I think, you know, a really important part of being on an advisory commission like this is just sharing all those ideas. I don't have the best ideas, but, you know, when we come together as a group and we start to build off of each other's ideas and talk through things, I really think that's where you get some of the best ideas that are the most out of the box and great solutions.
Great. Councilmember Badami.
Pass questions answered, thank you, Adana.
Okay, Councilmember Rennie.
I'll pass also.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Yen, let me start off with any of your observations about new focus areas for the Los Gatos Library.
I imagine there's, with the evolving population and community that the library serves, there's a lot of interest in different programs or more programs, I think there was mention from the feedback from the survey, programming in multiple languages, I think that's probably something that's maybe would come back in this year, in a more recent survey, that maybe didn't come back in responses from 10 years ago, for example. So I think materials offered in a variety of languages would probably be also something that the community might welcome, but, you know, there's no shortage, I'm sure, of things that people would love to see happening at the library. I think we've heard across the Board, everybody values what's already there, and they appreciate it, and they just probably would love more of anything. I think there's lots of, I'm sure there's lots of great ideas, and we could close our eyes, pick one out of the hat, and, you know, people would be thrilled.
Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I read all the applications, but yours, I enjoyed the part where you talked about whether, you know, when something's a tool, or are you overly dependent on it, and brought up AI as an issue. I mean, it's amazing to me how many people that don't think about it talk about, oh, print media is dead, and of course, we just had a major book retailer open in downtown Los Gatos, and, you know, I look at our library, but it is so much more than print material.
Yes.
So, can you expand to me, like, how technology is used in the library, or how that can, how you would view that as a tool to create access or other programs?
Technology as a whole in the library, I think, you know, there's things like access to just, you know, internet connectivity, that reliable internet connectivity, which maybe most people in our community have, but maybe not across the board, so we shouldn't, you know, we should continue to strive for things like that. Different needs, physical or people with neurological differences could appreciate materials that are offered in different formats, I think that's still important, you know, you have aging populations, I was just talking to somebody in the gallery here, large print books, obviously, for, you know, aging people, or people with physical disabilities who need access to ebooks or audiobooks, because holding a book, a physical book, as much as some of us love it, is just impossible. So, technology in how you deliver the materials and when you can potentially deliver it in more than one format continues, I think, to be important in terms of things like AI, right, this is, like, that's tricky, right? I mean, there's, there's opportunities to explore how it can be a creative, it could be helpful in a creative way, if you have people who just need a little bit of a help, who can't get past looking at like a blank page before they have to start writing something. Go to AI, you can maybe use it as a prompt, but then that's what it's for, right, to kind of spark the creativity as opposed to place the creativity. So I think maybe working with people to embrace some of that, I think some people are very quick to embrace it and think it's great, and, you know, they'll jam in, you know, I want to, find me 52 different recipes that use the things in my refrigerator, right? I mean, like, that's great, but there's other things to be wary of also, sorry. things to be wary of also. Sorry. I was kind of rambling.
It's okay. Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. So you mentioned seeing the role of the board as being possibly updating and setting new policies. So can you provide an example of a policy, or what needs updating with what we currently have?
I have to confess, I am not super familiar with all of the policies. I do know that one of the other candidates was mentioning that they are looking at policies in her current term, or as she's wrapping up her current term. I think generally speaking, it is just important to make sure that you revisit your policies, given the changing community, the different needs that the community has. I think, like I said, the diversity in Los Gatos might be different today than it was 15, 20 years ago. So just going back and visiting them, and making sure that they reflect the, the principles and the values that the board, and the library, and the town want to embrace and use as, you know, your guiding star, your north star, for what kind of services, and what kind of place you want your library to be. So without, you know, admittedly not having familiar, read through the existing policies, I think it's just, it's a good, it's housekeeping, right? It's not fun, but I think it needs to be done on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
I can't remember. Did you talk to us about what your experience personally at the library? Did you have kids that use it? Do you use the library?
I have not talked to that yet. And I do have a daughter who did use the library, again, sharing stories with another candidate about when the new library space opened, and the excitement around that. And that was just sort of like a milestone moment for us as a family. Visited quite a bit. As an adult, I have been splitting my time more between the Los Gatos Library and the Santa Clara County Library District, in order to find materials, sometimes that are harder to find in our catalog. So trying to take advantage of what was available. And so hopping between Santa Clara County Library, Los Gatos, and even the San Jose Public Library System with their various branches, to kind of look for, you know, get my hands on what I was looking for. But I still use the facility periodically.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I saw that you got your master's degree in, in library science. What compelled you to pursue that?
It's a totally weird story. My, I moved out to California, and I left my parents back in New York. And my father finally, I finally told my father I wasn't going to do his taxes anymore. And so he was on his own, and he needed to find something. And low and behold, the New York City Public Library System have offered free tax preparing, preparing services for seniors, which my dad jumped on board with. And at that moment, I knew I couldn't, I didn't think I could love libraries more, but that like pushed it over the edge. And it reignited my, my appreciation for what libraries do for their communities. And I just wanted to learn more about them. And so I just kind of jumped in with both feet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have we covered everyone who's online? Are we missing anyone? Okay. So with that, I want to thank you. And again, I would encourage you, if you are interested, should you not be appointed to the Library Board, if you were interested in the Community Health and Senior Services, that meets on the fourth Thursday at 4:00 PM. And the Personnel Board meets only on the first Wednesday in March, each year, at 4:00 PM. And you can either sign here, or let the clerk know. But thank you very much for your interest. And so now, the Personnel Board, we have one applicant, and we have two positions. So if you don't mind coming up here, please.
Good evening. My name is Martha Johansson. Thank you for having me tonight.
Great. Thank you. So we'll start with Councilmember Risto.
Oh, never mind. I can't count. I'm still getting used to your system. Thank you. Hi, Martha. First of all, you didn't get to do much in your last tour, right?
That's why I'm back.
You said, I think, the meeting happened the month before you were appointed.
Exactly. Yes, yes.
And, you know, this is not a board that meets except to check in on things. So what are your expectations for the year, and how are you going to prepare for your one meeting of the year?
Well, first, looking forward to be part of the meeting for the first time, and, and help, you know, develop this committee. I would like to mention that I have a lot of experience with employment and, and the rights of individuals. I work for an employment estate agency, and I'm also part of the Labor Management Committee. So we bring a lot of issues from the employers to the management in our department. And also, member of the Disability Advisory Council. And also, we talk about employers that are discriminated against reasonable accommodations, and things like that, or they don't get promoted because of disabilities, or any other issues. So I think, looking forward to serve and this committee, and apply my experience and knowledge as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember last year being very impressed by your application, as well as your conversations. So I appreciate you
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Offering to serve us.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. Is there anything more that you would like to add to your application, or are now speaking to us, that we can possibly learn even more about you?
Thank you. Well, about my experience, and also, I think what I would like to see probably, I didn't write in the, in my application, but I would like to see probably employers get to know this committee, and know that there is a committee that is neutral, and would like to make sure the process is transparent, and there's fairness in the process. If they get demoted, or they get discriminated against, I think it's important for the employers to know that there is a committee of individuals that are here to make sure the process is fair and transparent. Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
I'll pass.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing else from me either. Thanks for your interest.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I don't have any further questions, but I want to thank you for serving. This committee doesn't meet very frequently, but we absolutely need to have this committee. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Majors. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. So now we turn to the DEI Commission. And this, I'd invite all the applicants for the DEI Commission to come forward. We have, we have, we have one for a business owner or employee from Los Gatos. We have another nonprofit employee, and then we have another spot for Los Gatos residents. And so I'd like to start the interview with Councilmember Badami and Lale Iman Verdi. And if you don't mind, I kind of skipped. Would you mind just saying your names, please?
Lale Iman Verdi.
Okay. And do we have other people online?
We have one person online.
And what's her name?
Hi, I'm Tuba. Thank you for having me.
I'm sorry, what's her name?
Tuba Ahmed.
Oh, right. Okay. There were some other applicants. Are they online as well?
They're not online at this time.
Okay. So if I call them, let me know that I'm calling on somebody who's not there. So let's, let's start, again, as I said, with Councilmember Badami and Ms. Iman Verdi. Pass the mic down. Get it to you.
So welcome. If appointed, what ideas would you like to see the Commission explore?
First of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you. This is very exciting and an honor to be here. Actually, I used to come with my aunt when I was a teen, in my teenager years. So this is very exciting. So I'm multicultural, and I am multilingual, and I work with the community. I teach dance. I'm a chef. I'm a, I'm an entrepreneur. So what I do, I unite people, and I listen to the community. I provide support. And I like to bring cultural diversity, and integrate that into bringing cultural activities, food, cultural food, cultural dances, something different to the community, where there's so many different, you know, cultural groups here, diversity. And I'd like to see more of that.
Councilmember Rennie.
That was kind of my, she, she answered my question. I'm, I'm going to pass, I think.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
So I guess, are there any particular projects you'd like to see the DEI Commission work on, if you were to be appointed?
I would like to see more music and food integrated into the program. For example, music in the park. Why don't we bring some Turkish music to Persian musics? The community has so many different cultural backgrounds, and I would love to see some of that. I also would like to see some cooking programs offered, maybe cooking demos. It's just something exciting to bring to, to the, to the community, that's hands-on, and also bring some of the different cultural backgrounds to, to the community.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Kind of along the same lines, I'd be interested in, what do you think are some of the most tangible things that the Commission could work on, you know, given all of the things that the Commission has talked about, not just beyond the, maybe a little bit beyond just the things that you particularly are interested in, but are there some other really tangible ideas for the Commission?
I would like to see more of minority women that owned businesses here, more of just being included. I, I don't see much happening in that department. I see, and I hear, because people tell me, and I am really familiar with, you know, what especially single moms like myself go through, and there's no resources, and they're, they're looking for some tangible, for say, some places to go to, some, some programs, just to be heard. And I would like to see more of that for Commission to consider that, having that available for single moms, or also women going through difficult times, especially divorce, or a mental illness. Mental health is really, really big issue as well. I know I'm jumping all over the place, but these are the, these are the things that, on daily basis, that, you know, my, my people, my community, they come to me. And I like to address that. I like to be part of that. I like to present a good, good place, or safe place, I should say, for them to feel comfortable to come to.
You. Councilmember Risto.
You. When you brought up, you know, women-owned businesses, you know, I am familiar with a few shop owners downtown that fit their criteria, but of course, it's not going to be across the board. Given that it is not something that the town is in charge of, you know, the landlords or anything, I saw you were a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, how do you see encouragement from the DEI Commission, and maybe coupled with support from the Chamber of Commerce? You know, would you have ideas for how to bridge these types of issues with groups that are more aligned in that space?
Chamber of Commerce is such a beautiful, I mean, I just joined, not just for, it's been about five, six months, and it's been just a beautiful, great opportunity for me to expand and get to know different women-owned businesses, and such a great opportunity to bring what I truly believe in, in the line, the lines of single moms. I'm really interested in single moms, because there are many single moms out there, their opportunities are not really open to them. And they are suffering, basically. In the courts, they're not listening to these single moms. So they're left with barely, no protection, and no services, and nothing to turn to. And what happens, it turns into mental issues. So they go into these depression mode. And, you know, that leads to even more difficulties along the lines. So as far as bringing Chamber and DI together, we have to make some sort of a group, some sort of safe place. This is what I'm looking forward to do, for these women to feel that there is someone out there, there is help out there, that there is a support group, that these women-owned businesses, they're just out there, they don't have a place to go, they don't have, they don't know where to begin. Chamber of Commerce is the first place that I went, and I, I thought, okay, wow, you know, I have someone who's listening to me. Maybe I could do something with this, making, maybe I go somewhere with this. There is an opportunity for me to build my business. There is an opportunity for me to open up a shop someday, or a restaurant, or, or whatnot. So these are the things that I did not have before. And I, I'd love to do and hear more of that.
Okay. So next up is... Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor, for indulging. After listening, I really want to ask the question, a lot of the things that you want to work on, to me, fit a little more in the Community Health and Senior Services kinds of things. They, they are thinking about ways of supporting different parts of our community. So my question would be, would you be interested in serving on that Commission, instead of the DEI Commission?
You're going to ask a tough question, aren't you? I, I would love to help in any way I could, but my, my main focus is the DEI. I, I would love to work with the cultural and, and the equality. And hopefully, I, maybe I presented myself in a different category, but that is, that is my main focus. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, Councilmember Rennie, for Tuba Ahmed, we have Tuba online?
Hi, Tuba. Can you explain to me, you've got lots in your application, maybe summarize a little bit, which of your life experiences and work experiences and experiences around town, will you be able to bring to the Commission and help benefit the Commission?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, thank you for having me. It's an absolute honor to be here. I actually was on the DI Commission this past year. So that really helped inform my perspective and what I can do if, if I come, if I come on board in the next coming year. In my professional capacity, I work as the Programs and Events Coordinator at WVMA, which is West Valley Muslim Association, located, located Los Gatos. And as part of my job, I really work with the community to build up programs and events that bring everyone together. But as such, I get a lot of feedback, and I have a good ear, and a good pulse on what the community really needs. And so I really try to bridge those gaps. And I think when I come to the DI Commission, I bring those perspectives with me. And then that helps me really inform the kind of actions that we take as part of the Commission.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Being that you currently serve on the DEI Commission, what has been your favorite project or initiative that you've had the chance to work on?
I absolutely love working with the team. I think everyone is so unique in what skills and perspectives they bring. So I really enjoy just hearing everyone out. And a lot of, a lot of the work we've done has been discussion. My first year, I feel like, was more of an observational role. I was really learning how the Commission operates, and how it can be effective. And given it's such a new Commission, I think we're still kind of finding our way on how we can best serve the community. But I think one project, I mean, the Fourth of July event, although I wasn't able to be there in person, I was part of the planning of it initially. And I think that was really great. It was a great way to bring the community together. We did a very beautiful visual of the different places that people are from, who now We did a very beautiful visual of the different places that people are from who now reside in Los Gatos. I think that was really great. I know we are also pushing for a project where people come out and write out the whole Constitution. And I think that's another great and beautiful way to bring people together while also engaging in civic duty. So I think these kind of projects, just the idea of bringing people together is always really amazing, but like I mentioned, it's such a new Commission, I'm excited to see the potential and see where we can go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to kind of pursue that a little bit more in terms of, what are the, maybe one to two of the most tangible ideas that the town could implement over the next two to three years to enhance DEI?
I think one thing that we are really under utilizing right now are partnerships within the community, partnerships with businesses, with schools, other faith and nonprofit organizations. I think building on those partnerships and seeing where we can fit into their, into their programs, but also how they can help us push forward the programs that we want to see, and bring them to Los Gatos. I think that's a really good way forward. I know we did a really nice listing campaign where we touched base with a lot of the different sectors in Los Gatos and there's a report coming out in December. I would like to see the results of that report and see what kind of data we've collected and then build upon that. Of course, DEI is an ongoing, long-term, continuous learning process. So while we will be working off the data that we've collected, it will be a continuous listing campaign where we keep checking back with the community and seeing what we can do. Something tangible, I feel, like especially in holiday season, it's, there's a very, my time's running out, but it's, it's very hard to include everyone, especially in holiday season. And throughout the year, there's some holidays that are recognized and some holidays that people celebrate that aren't recognized. I think it would be a good way to bring awareness about those kind of holidays and just make sure that everyone who does live in Los Gatos is celebrated in their own way.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I appreciate your perspective, having been on the Commission. And I think sometimes when people get on the Commission, they struggle with thinking, okay, I'm gonna get 10 things done this year. And can you describe to me, like, what you've learned being on a Commission, like, how that works when you're, you've got constraints, you've got limited resources? And how do you get a diverse group of people to focus on one or two things to move forward and feel good about it?
Yeah, this is actually something I had to learn this past year. When I, I believe when I first came in, I was really idealistic in what I wanted to achieve. I was busting with ideas and I, I was like, well, why can't we do this? What's stopping us? And it took me really quickly to realize that that's not always the case and I had to take a step back and take more of a listening role and be inclusive of everyone and not just, not just be there to push my programs or the things that I want to see. So I think that was a big learning curve for me. But I, I do see there's a lot of value in that, because it allowed the opportunity for other people to, to come in and fill out their ideas and actually bring up really great ideas. And I think rather than focusing, like, like you said, on like 10 different things, maybe just taking one or two and doing them well, I think quality over quantity is always, always valued. So I agree. And I think we live, we're very privileged to live in a beautiful town that although, you know, we could always do more, is really inclusive and is really kind. So in that terms, it's finding the right needs that we need to serve and trying to identify how best we can do that. But I agree with you, it is sometimes just taking a step back and listening and then seeing where you can fit into the solution.
Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. Do you see the Commission as being effective in making action items actually come to fruition?
Yes, I think, I think there is a lot of potential there. I do feel, because we're such a new Commission, we're still trying to figure out how best to do that. But I do, I do see the heart there and I do see the intentions there. I think we, we need to collect more data for sure and see how, exactly, and like I said, see where we fit in. But I do feel there are, there are needs that the DEI is needed for and that we can fulfill that. So I do see that there is potential there.
Thank you. So now, Ms. Bruno, and maybe we could start with Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I saw you have a lot of different professional experiences, some of which, you know, touch the, the DEI space. Can you talk a little about how you would pull together some of your professional experiences to support the Commission?
So I come from a business background in communications, marketing, technology, startups, and just listening to some of the things around the Commission. I would probably bring communication skills, but measurement skills. So I would like to see more data collection. I'm glad to hear Tuba talking about that there is data collection, but measuring efforts and outcomes from efforts seems really important to me. That's the only way that you figure out what works and what doesn't work. So you have to hone in on those programs that are most effective and if you don't put some accountability measures in place, how many people came, how many people engaged, how many people signed up for the email? You have to keep track of all of that kind of thing. So I would probably want to bring that to the Commission. And since it is new, I always like something that's new where all the rules aren't written yet and we can figure out what does this Commission want to be, how can it best serve the city? Some of the ideas, just listening here tonight, partnership sounds good, but my first thought was, we're a partner to the Council, but also it seems like we should be a partner to all of the other Commissions, because I heard little threads of DEI needs and issues come through in a lot of the discussions from other Commission interviewees and some of the questions that were asked. So I see it more as learning how we can best be a resource. I have talked to some people on the Commission. I know there's not a lot of resources to spend, money to spend to put on programs, but we can use our brains and do research and crunch data, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I would ask pretty much the same question. What are one or two of the most tangible ideas, projects, programs that the town could implement over the next two to three years to enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion?
I do like what Lalee said about more cultural, seeing more of the cultures that are here displayed more prominently. So I've never been in a more diverse place. I play tennis at court side and I'm often the only person who grew up in California or in this country on the court. There's just incredible diversity here, but I don't always see, I think we had Oktoberfest, but I don't always see it manifested in some of the events, and we have a lot of events, like, it would be nice to see some music from other countries and maybe when you have taste of Los Gatos, there's a lot of the foods from, of places where people are from. I don't know how we surface that, but I know it's all here, because that's who I see every day.
Councilmember Risto?
Your comments about how you grew up and had classmates from around the world and you sort of assumed everyone lived that kind of diversity and then when you stepped out of that, you realized not everybody experiences that. I grew up in Chicago and had a very, you know, similar experience and then, you know, all of a sudden you go someplace where there's not as much diversity. I think Los Gatos has changed a lot in the 40 years that I've lived here and I'm constantly meeting people from other countries. So in your perspective, living here and experiencing that, talking about having different types of events, do you sense a feeling of inclusivity and how would you tie that together more? Like, do you feel like across our community, there's a sense of inclusivity?
I feel like there are a lot of events here and a lot of people come, so I think that speaks to them feeling like, you know, this is open to all and, and they can come and be part of the town. I think it's welcoming in that way. I can't speak to, I know, I hear from people that there are ways in which they don't feel as welcome. Even in the town home complex where I live, I had a neighbor tell me the other day, yeah, there's a person who lives here that told me, people like me shouldn't live here. So I think there's things beneath the surface. So it, we have a lot of celebrations and it feels very inclusive, but I think beneath the surface, a lot of people don't feel as included. And they may not be showing up and helping them feel safe and included would be something, you know, we need to work on.
Member Badami?
Thank you. So I heard you say that you've spoken to some of the, the current Commissioners on the DEI Commission. Have you watched or attended one of their meetings in person?
No, I have not. I've read through meeting minutes and agendas. I haven't attended a meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie?
I think I'm gonna pass. She's given us lots of information so far. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So, let's see. Patricia Uromay, I'm gonna start. Yeah, welcome. I'm gonna start with my same question. What are the one or two of the most tangible ideas, programs, projects that the town could implement over the next two to three years to enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion?
I don't know about one or two, because it seems like, as, what was her name? Lynn was mentioning. It seems that DEI, so, so many of the activities of the town, of the library, of the schools, of the various Commissions can be seen through a DEI lens and there could be an interaction between all of that. I loved the Fourth of July event. I know there have been marches, you know, through the town, supporting, you know, different communities that may have felt discriminated against or whatever. I think continuing things like that would be fantastic. I've been living in Los Gatos since the late 80s and there is a huge change in the population. I think I was the only Hispanic, or I felt like it. Certainly, I was, I was a Hispanic mom who brought in the, you know, Cinco de Mayo things or the, you know, Mexican food. I was also, at the time, in a couple of my kids' classes, the only Jewish mom, so I'd bring in the latkes and, you know, the kids were a little confused, but they liked my food, like Lalee, and I have her cookbook. I think food, sharing food, sharing music, activities, intergenerational things, I think would be fantastic. There's a huge need. And let's forget, let's not forget that we're not talking only about diversity, equity, and inclusion of ethnicities, but also ages, you know, intergenerational, you know, seniors need to have a voice. As I'm getting there myself, now that I'm retiring, I notice that a lot in my profession. I deal with a lot of seniors. There are many, I call them orphan seniors, that still have a lot to offer and really have, you know, and there are a lot of kids who are maybe are single parents. So anyways, I think there's a lot that can be done and I've heard wonderful things about the Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Risto?
Yeah, so have, I forgot to look on here, have you attended a meeting of the DEI Commission?
I have not. Honestly, I didn't even know there was an actual Commission. I thought it was just a group of people putting these things together. I know Diane Fisher, we belong to the same synagogue and she is very active, so, oh, come to this, and I would just go. I did not realize that this Commission existed. I think it's wonderful that you all did this and you continue to do this in, even in this climate that we have nowadays. I would love to attend. I mean, I probably will attend regardless of whatever happens here, just to see what you all are doing and contribute in any way I can. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Badami?
Councilmember Risto took my question, so I will pass.
Councilmember Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. So you, you touched on background as Jewish and as Hispanic. What other things in your work and life experiences that come, can you bring to this Commission to help benefit the Commission?
Well, gosh, I was on the Hispanic Foundation of Silicon Valley Board and I was part of the Women of Silicon Valley Donor Circle, where we donated money to various causes. So we went to visit different nonprofits that were providing services to different communities. I learned a lot, obviously, about the various communities that needed help. I was a child advocate for many years in the court system, where it's working with children in foster care. I'm very involved with the La Raza Lawyers Association. I did immigration law for a while. I work with seniors in my estate planning practice and with injured workers, which is kind of another population, you know, people that are handicapped and have disabilities also need to be included. So I find myself largely, through my life, I've been like a translator and a bringing together of people that maybe previously didn't quite understand each other's worlds, but being able to speak different languages or having lived in different cultures and having friends from different places, I feel like I've been able to connect people and there is always a very common, there's a commonality we all have. Many of us worry about the same things and want the same things and have the same hopes and fears. And I think when you can get people to meet on that level, it just makes everything better.
Vice Mayor?
You gave very thorough answers. Nothing else from me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see, we, do we have any applicants online?
Yes, we have one more. Joy?
And could you just state your name, please?
Hello, everybody. My name is Joy Sue. It's good to see everyone.
Okay. Thank you. And so if I could ask Councilmember Risto to start the interview?
Send your application in a minute, but, so, thank you. Can you expand on what you see the DEI Commission doing in the next year and how you would, you know, with limited resources and a sharpened focus, what would you like to work on the most?
As a semi-retired business executive, I run on tight budgets. I know how to get things done with high priority order. So I think that's the first thing I would bring to this Commission, just this ultra-efficient way of getting things done. And as for doing more in DEI, I feel like this is such an important aspect of this country that is currently going away. And I see a lot of my peers and other companies that have canceled their DEI programs and more than ever, I feel like that is more important. And so for me, the areas where I think we can make an impact is, one, starting DEI at a younger age, working with our student Commissioners and bringing DEI concepts to our local schools. I'm a mom of the Union School District. I live in the Bel Gatos of Los Gatos and I'd love to see more DEI efforts by working with our Commissioners. Second is a way for more inclusion of various perspectives, not only by culture, by race, by sexual orientation or by gender, but just more representation around Los Gatos. So piggybacking on the existing events, existing great things that we already do, but adding a DEI lens to it. So for example, music in the park, do we have different types of music being offered and performances by local organizations? When we look at the upcoming holiday parade or future parades, can we include other organizations that haven't been a part of those in the past years? It's just looking at what we have and augmenting those in the short term and then while providing the roadmap to add more in the longer term. And then I love what everybody else... And then I love what everybody else said about adding more culture, because Los Gatos is such a diverse background, and I completely agree with everybody who said that before. I won't take those ideas, but I do think it is important for residents to be seen and to feel reflected in the town that they live in.
Thank you. Councilmember Badami.
I should go. Hi, Joy. You submitted two applications, one also for the Arts and Culture Commission. What is your priority?
I would say my priority is on DEI, because of the urgency that I've seen in all of my peers in the corporate world. This has to stay, this has to be an important fabric of our community, of our state, and of our country. And so if I have to dedicate more time to this, I would definitely put this over Arts and Culture, even though I'm a huge fan of Arts and Culture. I'm in Florence at the moment, if you could tell, just learning and soaking up as much art and culture as I can here. But if I had to choose, I would choose the DEI Commission.
Okay. Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. So Ms. Sue, you touched on a little bit, but I think you could probably add more to my favorite question about what work and life experiences can you bring to help make the commission successful?
I come from a very interesting background of, one, being an immigrant. I immigrated from Taiwan to the US in 1988. I have studied abroad in South Africa during my MBA. I have worked abroad in Spain during my undergraduate. And professionally, as a business executive, I have bridged cultures by bringing an India company, Freshworks, to the US, and having to go IPO in 2021, and most recently, bringing Contentful from Berlin, Germany, to the US. And so I see myself as somebody who has bridged cultures, bridged different types of working, bridged the way we have to respect other people's opinions. And so from that lens, I see myself as just one of so many different types of people that we have in Los Gatos. And if there is one of me, there's probably many other stories that need to be heard. And so I try to immerse myself in as many cultures and events as I can. And believe it or not, I'm known to throw the biggest holy parties. They're welcoming spring, they're Indian parties. I'm not Indian, but I feel like that is one of my favorite things to do. I've been learning about Indian culture as I brought a company over from India. I'm currently learning Indian dance as part of the Indian Stars Group. It's a dance group, and I think it's important to not only say, okay, we appreciate other people's cultures, but I actually put myself out there. I travel all around the world, I see different cultures. I was just in India celebrating a wedding, and here in Florence, trying to learn more about the Renaissance, teaching my kids about how things are done here, looking at different architecture. So with that lens, I think it's important to know that there is more out there, and my answers may not always be the right one, and there's room for more voices at the table, and that is what the DEI Commission is meant to do.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for demonstrating your commitment by waking up in the middle of the night in Italy. So, a little bit more to your professional experience. You talked about sort of employee resource groups, and ways to sort of educate people about DEI. I think one of the challenges is oftentimes, I think, the people that are interviewing for the DEI Commission, right, aren't the people, or serving on the DEI Commission, aren't the people that need the DEI education. And so how would you think about how to get DEI into the broader community, you know, to touch some of the people that might be less up on some of these issues?
That's a great question, Vice Mayor. I think DEI has to be done in a way that, one, is, you start small, and you start small, and you model great behavior. So let's look at gender and gender-affirming pronouns. I think that is a great way, like, for me right now, for all of Los Gatos employees, I should probably write Joy Sue slash, and then with she/her next to it, just so we know that there's different gender norms in this community. And the more that we do that, the more that things like this become a norm, little things like that, that is how it catches on. Or small training programs that can be copied exact to different organizations. If we find one that has worked, that is not resource-intensive, we take it around to different groups, different organizations within Los Gatos, right? Let's say the Kiwanis Group has one, or another group has one, we can definitely piggyback on those and leverage the same resources that we have in Los Gatos. And I completely agree, the people who may need it may not be the people who run this commission. I think it's by showcasing and by letting people know that, hey, it starts small. We can just put our pronouns up. Hey, it starts small. Let's acknowledge a holiday that we don't celebrate. Hey, let's start small. Let's have somebody who normally isn't in this position give them a chance to try something new. That's the mindset that it takes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so I just wanted to ask, if I could, what are one or two of the most tangible ideas, projects, programs that the town could implement over the next two to three years to enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion?
I think one is relooking at the calendar of events, and slotting in areas of inclusion. So looking at the upcoming holiday parade, Fourth of July parades, library events, the various wonderful things that we do, taking that, working with the other committee members to come up with, hey, let's also, hey, the holidays, it's close to Hanukkah, it's close to Quads, are there other things we could do? Is Chinese New Year something we want, Lunar New Year something we want to consider? Are there certain poets, writers, different people from different ideologies that we should be celebrating? Our family celebrates Burns Days in January, because my husband is of Scottish descent. So it's about looking at something and prioritizing the top three or four that we want to include into our community. That would be number one. Number two is starting grassroots with the youth. I think when you get people young, DEI, the concept stays with them forever. And so figuring out how to activate our youth commissioners, figuring out what programs are at schools, and then working with the schools and the school boards to implement small-scale things that can go a long way. And that's probably the top two I would recommend for the top, you know, two, three years, because it takes a long time to get things done, and I don't want to overpromise.
Great, thank you. Let's see, so we made, I think, I think everyone had a chance to ask a question, and so now, Ms. Sparachino? And so if we could start with Councilmember Badami.
Hi, Charlotte, welcome.
Thank you.
Have you watched or attended a DEI meeting?
No, I didn't. I honestly did not know that it existed until I saw a blurb in, I was just starting to, we've only lived here for two years. We bought a house, a 1910 house we fell in love with, three years, five years ago, sorry, took three years to remodel it, moved in two years ago. And I did, anyway, so I was just starting to sign up for the Los Gatos Communications from the town, and saw a few weeks ago that there even was a commission. My husband and I, when we were looking to buy our first house, we were, just wanted to go where the trees were, and we were looking in Los Gatos and Saratoga. We ended up in Saratoga. We've lived there for almost 35 years, but also, you know, obviously spent a lot of time here, and then we looked in for a smaller house in Saratoga, after, you know, we're retired now, we're just retired. Would have gone to Saratoga or Los Gatos, honestly, so, yeah, sorry, that's not a popular answer, but no, I haven't. But I have to tell you, I was vaguely aware of some of the things that were happening a few years ago by just reading the local, probably Saratoga paper, the Mercury News. And, yeah, so I'm really impressed when I only realized in going back and reading a little bit after applying for this, that you did a study and took it so seriously, and like, what can we do to improve things here in Saratoga, so.
Councilmember Rennie.
So I see you have experience as a teacher, and I'll go to my favorite question, what your work and lived experiences and experiences around Los Gatos, how can you bring those to benefit the commission?
Well, as a teacher, I taught in Cupertino Union School District, eighth grade, so I had a very, very diverse group of students, and loved, you know, I mean, they probably learned some things about this old white lady could actually be fun, and vice versa, and, you know, and, but, you know, kids of different backgrounds coming together and growing up together, it's inspiring, and then raising my kids in Saratoga, very similar. You know, where we had experiences, I know I put on, I think I talked about a Diversity Task Force that I co-founded with a friend, it's another mom at Saratoga High, when we kind of thought there were some weird things going on there. So those kinds of things.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So digging a little bit deeper into your background as a teacher and working with students, how do you think, you know, the DEI Commission could better engage with the schools to sort of help support students?
Yeah, I was glad, I think I did see that you have two students who are on the commission, and that's wonderful. It'd be nice to have even more. So, yeah, as a teacher, I know how separate schools can be sometimes, where they don't really like, you know, even town or city entities telling them what to do, but from my experience, when I, we did our work with the Diversity Task Force at Saratoga High, we had student representatives, parent representatives, staff representatives, and we got together, I think it was twice a month, afternoon meetings, and just kind of talked about awkward things or things we were seeing, and so when, I've been, you have so many impressive candidates here. Don't envy you at all, but your decision, but the, I was going to say that collecting data, excellent, communicating back to the town, I have to, I had this experience, was it last summer? I feel like it was longer than that, so it may not have been the DEI Commission that was responsible for it, but my husband and I were, I think, eating lunch downtown, whenever it was, on a Saturday afternoon or something, and I saw a banner up there that said, "You belong in Los Gatos," with different colored faces on it, and I go, I go, "Look at that, Michael, go Los Gatos." You know, it was just, it was nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then my favorite question for this commission is, what are the one or two most tangible ideas, projects, programs that the town could implement over the next two to three years to enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion?
I think, you know, so many good ideas have been brought up about being a presence. I think, obviously, just communicating that the commission exists. I just read today, I think, in some local, maybe it was American, about Saratoga City Council just put up a, some kind of a thing, I think it was at West Valley College, where they had like eight different languages about let there be peace in the world, or something like that, just, so physical manifestations of, we want to do better, we want to be inclusive, we're not going to necessarily like change the demographics overnight, that's not what we need to do, but to anybody who is here of color, or of, you know, when we're talking about gender, body type, I mean, whatever, that, you know, we are inclusive.
Yep. So, let's see, Councilmember Risto, have you had a chance yet?
No, I was just curious, you are right. I mean, we really, as a town government, can't go in and go into the schools, right? You know, separate areas. But in terms of the Diversity Task Force at Saratoga High School, I'm just curious, like, I know you said you talked about things, was the goal to talk about issues so that it aired them, and what was the result? I mean, it sounds like, what was the plan? How was it executed? And then, do you feel like it made a difference?
Yeah, we did respond back, we did get interviewed by, like, the school newspaper, there were articles, or in the parent newsletters, we, of course, we talked with the principal regularly, and, not sure if I'm answering your question, but we, I think they had, you know, when, they would, the kids would, we had more than two kids on the committee, they would do things, like when they would have things in the quad, there would be a table where they would be representing that, and they, we increased our membership substantially. I think I was on the, you know, it was until my last kid graduated, I was probably there for six years doing it, and it became a popular club, and the kids kind of took on a lot of it themselves. So it would be wonderful to be able to work with the schools, you know, in some way.
Like, as a presence and as a conversation, it did make a difference?
Yeah, I think that a lot of it is, to me, it may be oversimplifying, but a lot of it is just people have these preconceived ideas about the other, and until they know somebody and they realize, hey, you and I, we have so much in common, right? But with, not a lot in common perhaps in our backgrounds, but students, kids, adults, I think are all, you know, capable, I mean, capable of realizing that, but also capable of harboring those, you know, suspicions and beliefs that are misguided.
Great, thank you very much. And so I think we are missing one applicant, is that correct? Who withdrew, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Last chance, nobody else online?
That applicant withdrew.
Okay. So thank you very much, and again, the offer, if you do want to put your name in, you can either do it here, or just let our clerk know that you might be interested if you weren't selected for this commission. So thank you very much. And Arts and Culture, and I know, I apologize, Arts and Culture for you being last, but I do have to say that being A, it was often the first commission, so, but, yes, there we go. Okay. So, great. So if you wouldn't mind, yeah, I think we have one, two, three, four, we have, I think, five applicants. So if you don't mind, just state your name, please. Thank you. All right. Great. And is there anyone online?
Yes, Joy Sue is online as well.
Okay. And so there was one other who's not online, is that correct?
I don't see anyone else online.
Okay. So let's get started with Joy Sue and Councilmember Rennie, if you could start us off, please.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Joy, you started to tell us about some of your art experience. What forms of art and culture do you think we should focus on bringing to Los Gatos?
As a resident for about 10 years, I feel that we're really strong on the art piece. Having seen so many of the different initiatives around the museum, different things happening in the libraries, and I thought, you know what, we do a great job there. The culture piece, I feel like, is the huge opportunity here, and that also kind of links to some of what I was telling you in the DEI side. Bringing forth some of the cultures that we have within Los Gatos, making sure that things are celebrated, and piggybacking on the events that we already have, I think that would be a huge win for the Arts and Culture Committee.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. You talked about this a little bit in your application, but when it comes to public art, that's one of the big things, you know, the Arts and Culture Commission really champions. Do you have any thoughts or ideas about? Commission really champions. Do you have any thoughts or ideas about what the town could do to incorporate more public art into the town?
It depends, again, budget pending, art does get expensive, and finding the right people to activate on those art pieces, it's costly. And so I want to be realistic about that. But in the past, you know, and when I was volunteering with the Berkeley School District, we use art as a way of building self-confidence in the elementary school ages. And this was within a much more inner-city type of social economic background. And so we would procure paint from various paint stores, local paint stores, and I mean volunteers, like myself would do that. And we would work with schools to get a blank canvas, and we would have students come out in groups and do different pieces of that. So that becomes community art. Now, does it have to be in a school setting? No. But I do think it could be fun for different spotlights in Los Gatos, if there's different wall space, to invite different artists, to invite different organizations to contribute, so that we can see and improve. And then, take the Silicon Valley aspect to it, because tech is so, I guess, so prevalent in our, in our area, figure out ways to incorporate that art into technology. Take that next step. So I play Pokemon Go. Can we make that a stop in Pokemon Go? Can we find ways to make those installations and have them interact with you and tell you something unique about the town of Los Gatos? I think that would be the wow factor.
Thank you. Okay. So, kind of using a broad definition of art, are there any arts or types of art that are lacking in Los Gatos?
As a former trained dancer, I feel that dance is a missing form of art. Most of the art that we see are graffiti art, physical art, the art that you see behind me. Music is a different kind of art, but we have that during music in the park, we have different types of musical performances. But I do feel like physical, dramatic arts, dance, that type of performances are currently missing, and I'd love to see more of that by inviting organizations that currently are doing it, the Los Gatos Ballet, different dance groups that I'm a part of, to have them perform at various parades and events.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto?
I have a question at the moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. So I'm looking at your application, and you talk about bringing executive functioning skills. So how would you relate that in evaluating art and culture?
I think it brings in the ability to prioritize a lot of competing, important things to do. There's always great ideas in Los Gatos, but maybe not the right amount of resources to fund them, or we get distracted and nothing gets done. So the way I'm able to work is to push for things that can be done, and within budget, and to do it within a lot of timeline. I think that's really important. But how do you balance that with that right-brained artistic side? Well, I come from both, right? Having been a dancer, having, I'm still dancing, I'm still part of the art community. Having both of those allow me to kind of permeate in both sides of that executive functioning skill, and having art be front and center of the things that I do. So I would say, being that former executive, I'm able to get things done in a respectful way, within budget and on time.
Thank you. Councilmember Rennie. Oh, you started, right? Okay. Terrific. So now, Anne Lamborn, if Vice Mayor could start the interview.
Thank you. So you've served on the Arts and Culture Commission for a while. What makes you want to continue your service?
I see the green. The question, I was thinking about that same question. And why would I not want to serve on it at this time? We have, we finally have the glimmering of money. Green, I'm seeing green, like, I'm wearing green. This is green is what it's all about. Not everyone knows, but I think everyone here knows, that we have a percent for arts program, it's 1% of building costs in certain types of buildings and so forth. And then, yeah, when the money finally comes in, and we can see pictures of, we can project when we look at the building permits, and we can guess how much that building will cost, and what 1% is of that, that's very green. And it's so exciting to me, now in my old age, to have served on this arts commission for so many times, for so many years, and I feel my dreams are coming true. I want to live at the best time of my life now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And so I wanted to ask about kind of the broad term of the word art. Are there any arts or types of art that are lacking in Los Gatos?
Oh, of course, I'd love to answer that question. First of all, my definition of art is art communicates in essence. And now, your question is, what's lacking in Los Gatos? It's all here. But we have all these nice commissions, like parks and streets and the planning commission, and back on the streets, the commute along the Los Gatos Creek Trail, I consider that to be the ugliest commute in all of Los Gatos. And I live there. The gate, I have a back gate that opens onto Robert's Road, you've probably seen it, and it needs a little repair, but it's legit. And it was installed by the Public Works for me. If I go to the right, towards downtown Los Gatos, those walls, that's a mural invitation. That's about 500 feet of, no, I think it's about 1,000 feet of mural. That has to have the best public art that we could ever get. And maybe that won't happen in my lifetime, but that is what we lack.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I think between the percent for art, which will be kicking in, as well as, at least for the moment, the completion of the Gateway Project, I'm excited about, you know, public art installations. So as the money comes in for percent of art, what would be a priority for you for public art? Where would you want it, and what would you want?
Okay. I have to mention that we already have the, no, not that one, Maureen, but we have Whole Foods. It's coming. We'll have 10 murals on Whole Foods, paid for by, it's not exactly the planning commission, but it's related, and 10 panels that will be 12 feet high by seven feet wide. That is exciting. So what was the question? What do I want to see? Oh, sure. Oh, I have two. But I want to see some cheap ones happen right away, like some mosaics and some sidewalks and some artist-designed benches, and lots of little things. I want streetscapes. I want, I want us to have the most beautiful, interesting streetscapes that we've, better than anything we've ever seen in all of our travels that we've all gotten to do all over the world, shall we say. Okay, but what's my number one? There's a sculptor in the town of Los Gatos that is aging, and he should be given the opportunity to do a piece of sculpture here. And I don't know how that can be done, given the way our public art operates at this time.
Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. I'll pass. I have no questions.
Member Rennie?
I'll pass also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so next, I'm going to move on to Maureen Caponjavi, and I will start. And I know you've served for some time on the commission, but I wanted to kind of go back to your lived experience. And what is your lived experience with the kinds of recommendations that the Arts and Culture Commission makes? Any specific examples that you'd like to cite?
Sorry?
Of your lived experience and how that relates to the kind of...
How we're connected?
Yeah.
So it's all wrapped up in one story. I have six brothers and sisters. My brother and I are 10 months apart. So seven kids running around, always some kind of chaos, my dad working a lot, my mom working with us a lot. And my, my dad knew, and I'm left-handed, and I think seven percent, what, 7% in the world are left-handed and is mostly male. But anyways, I'm left-handed, and he always treated me, found a way to make me feel special, like he did with all of us. My sister Anne was given a guitar. But what he did was he signed me up for art lessons. So I got to leave the house, yeah, and I used to go to, her name was Shirley Smith, and she painted out of her home, and I was the only kid artist, artist there. It was all adults. And I just thought it was the best thing. And I created a piece of art at the end of my, you know, X amount of weeks with Shirley. And it was kind of horrible, but my dad hung that up behind his chair, so that every time I went down the stairs, I could see it. And none of my brothers or sisters minded, they knew that, okay, my nickname is Mimi, well, Mimi loves that stuff, so we're happy for her too. And that, like, that never left. I thought, my whole life, I'll have some art, I'll have some representation of creativity that I can find. And I think you can find it everywhere, from an ugly-ass picture of a Petunia to, you know, the Eiffel Tower.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Badami?
I'm hearing a lot of enthusiasm from these applicants. It's quite exciting.
I guess just therapy.
Well, you also describe it as being fun, and you've got capitals there. So describe how much fun you have with all of it?
I just, I don't know, I think, and I try to see art everywhere, you know, the obvious art, the sculptures, the paintings, the, you know, mixed media. But that's, you know, underneath all of that is more art and more art. And however you define art, which, which just could be how water flows through a river, and when the stones are there, it changes it, that's art. So I just see it everywhere, and, and I, my goal, my wish would be that everyone could find art, if you kind of look hard enough and you're really in the mood, and it's lifted my mood, it's helped, helped me through my life. I have a degree in fine arts, I worked at an art museum in Canada, I worked at another PR and marketing establishment, but I did a lot of the art-related work. So I've, it's always been with me, it's who I am. And it's been an honor to, like, every year I say, okay, I'm not re-upping for the Arts Commission, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to spend 10 hours talking about one thing. But I keep coming back, I keep coming back, it's always something different. Now we've got some real work to do, because we've worked so hard in the past 12 years, Anne and I and a couple of others who have really just stuck to it when there was nothing. And this little... Yeah, I know. I know, it's a long, long time. Anyway, I can't imagine life without it. I appreciate that this little town has a big, big plans and thinks big, and can solve problems, and we can get some beautiful, you know, the atmosphere, I don't know, everywhere I see it. And actually tonight, when, all day, all night tonight, when we're rotating around, I was like looking at different, the different color schemes of the different suits, and oh, if this little focal point, so like, I was way off in another land, thinking about color and form.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Risto, I'm sorry I missed you in this rotation.
No, no worries. So I do appreciate that you want to continue serving, and I, you know, as somebody that's worked on other commissions, I know that when you have a vision, sometimes it takes 10 years or longer to get there. And if you knew in advance how long it would take, you would throw up your hands. On the other hand, if you didn't start, it wouldn't have happened. So I appreciate that you want to continue this work. So what is, what is the heavy lift now? Now that we know of a funding source, how will the Arts Commission try to, try to make the decisions about what will happen? Is it typically the applicant's choice, or what kind of voice is the...
You mean artists who are selected?
Well, like for Whole Foods, I know the mural's going up. So what role did the Arts Commission play in that? And what role do you see going forward with other developments and art?
Well, we didn't really have anything, we kind of found out it had already happened. And this is the percentage for art program that the town has, where 0.5% of construction costs for projects under $200,000, and then there's some residential in there. That portion gets put into a, into a bank account for the arts. So these developers can choose, so if there's a new development coming up, the developer can choose to pay in lieu and put up their piece of 24/7 public art, or they can hand it off to us. But we can finance a lot of, you know, a lot of what's coming up through just this ordinance alone, I think. I mean, we've got, I just looked in my, in my packet, there are 17 projects on the go in Los Gatos, and I think 10 of those we can extract a percentage for art from. So it's free money for us.
Money that's going to turn into art?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rennie?
I'm very familiar with Ms. Caponjavi's work, but I have a question I'm sort of dying to ask. It's probably one of those curveball ones. It's, it's really about art and controversial art, and should we be looking for town art that the most people would like? And so I'll go to the cat sculptures. As council members, we often get...
I can't get enough of those cat sculptures.
That's not what I hear. I hear, whose idea was this? And unfortunately, I voted for it, so I don't know what to tell them.
I have a card now, just, just give them my card. Yeah. But those people have, have come around. I'm not here to diss, not really, kind of a little bit. Thank you for that question. And there, and, and the Gateway, the Gateway Project is finished, the fifth cat went up in my neighborhood. And so the, so the Gateway Project, which was a huge heavy lift, and, you know, another one, and we pulled it off. And so once you do something like that, you think, okay, what's next? And, and we have a lot of talent on the, on the commission. Anyone new who joins, bring something to the game, you know, I'll never say no, and if someone's got an idea, we'll hear it. In the end, I might say no, but I'll, I sure would like to hear it first, because I was doing that when I was a little kid too.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I also know Maureen well, so I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Get a little breathing room in there.
Thank you. So Ms. Wallace? Yes. And Councilmember Risto, if you'd like to kick it off?
Well, I guess I'll just ask you, like, what do you want to bring to the Arts and Culture Commission, and what do you hope to be achieving?
So it was very exciting to read about the percentages that are going to go towards public art here in Los Gatos. My daughter has a photo up on the footbridge, which just got funded. I was grateful for the council providing funds for that to get installed, because she kept asking, when's it going to be put up? When's it going to be put up? I think the town does a great job of visual arts, and could do a better job of performing arts, dance arts, theater, music, love music in the park so much. But I think we could bring music to smaller spaces, perhaps this commission in conjunction with the Parks Commission. Perhaps this commission in conjunction with the Parks Commission. You know, listening to all the different commissions was very exciting, so in ways we can collaborate with them to bring art. I'm a big believer in accessible art, so not everyone can see, not everyone can access the art that we have in town. So providing art in more accessible ways in more spaces in town, I think is very important.
Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. So expanding beyond your application and what you wrote on it, can you actually expand on your experience, interest, and your expertise that you would feel would be most useful to this commission?
So I work for the San Jose Opera, so, and I am also a classically trained musician. I am the mother of a theater kid and visual artist, so art is spread throughout our lives from the time we wake up till the time we go to sleep. I have sat on nonprofit boards and volunteered for nonprofits since I was a teenager. I was a member of Junior League of San Jose. I was a good neighbor of Erica Goss when she became poet laureate of Los Gatos and really enjoyed seeing her work before she came here. So I have a lot of lived experience that I could bring to the table in both a personal and professional sense. So work with grants, work with doing more with less in the art space.
Councilmember Rennie.
Have you attended an Arts Commission meeting? And how familiar are you with the work they've done?
I have not attended a meeting. I just moved back to town after a 13-year hiatus in Morgan Hill. But I was, thank you, I'm so happy to be back. My boys both graduated from Los Gatos High School. They're adults now. My daughter bikes to Fisher, so I'm very interested in the bike trails that have gone in. She feels very safe there. But I read through the commission's notes from the last several years. You guys have done some great work, so thank you very much. Obviously, I have a child who has her art up on the footbridge. We live one block away from the Los Gatos Trail, and so we walk down that footbridge all the time. And when we first moved back to town, she said, ooh, how do I get my art up here? And so we went and explored, and she took the class through the Los Gatos Community Center, and she really enjoyed it.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciated what you said about the performing arts. I totally agree with you. I think that that's something we could incorporate more of. How could you see that manifesting? Are there events where you feel like, you know, we could bring that in? And second question on that, how does that usually work? Like, do you, is it expensive? Like, how do you, how does that go?
So for the opera, we have different initiatives with the city of San Jose, and so we bring our singers, who are artists in residence. So I could see that as being high school students who are in the arts programs here in Los Gatos, or even in the elementary school. There's a great performing arts program at Fisher Middle School. I mean, those kids are so incredibly talented. And for them to be able to come out and do art in the community in spaces other than Fisher would be fantastic. Using the, you know, the bandstand at Oak Meadow Park, you know, I feel like that's a very underutilized space. For this town, there could be theater productions there. We could have, you know, a summer theater series. I'd like to see more performing arts outside of music in the park, and I think there's lots of ways to incorporate that in town.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I wondered if you had some ideas about art, art programs synergy with diversity, equity, and inclusion? Or even better, maybe some joint projects?
I was thinking about that. So, you know, one of the kind of, actually goes along three commissions. So the Parks Commission, DEI Commission, and the Arts and Cultural Commission, you know, one of the most accessible arts projects I have seen has been the Rotary Playgrounds that have been throughout Santa Clara County. In Morgan Hill, we had a Magical Bridge Playground that had this beautiful sculpture that also created music. And so there are a lot of visually challenged children that really enjoyed that art piece, which was also a sculptural piece in that park. I do believe that we need to make sure that public art is accessible in all ways, you know. Not everybody's going to be able to see a mural. So can we have a visual, you know, depiction of the mural in Braille? Can we have, you know, a button to push where it describes the mural in detail for somebody who who wouldn't be able to experience it otherwise? I think exploring those options with different commissions is important.
Very good. I think we have reached all of our interview questions and all of our applicants. So I want to thank you all and again encourage if anyone would like to apply for one of the other commissions in case they're not appointed, you're welcome to either do that here or just let our clerk know that you're interested in that. And so thank you, thank you all very much. Okay, well, go ahead. Great. So thank you all, and we will get some instructions on deliberation and move into that if there, maybe you're welcome to stay or to watch on KCAT or Zoom. But we're going to, we are going to deliberate tonight and make some decisions. No. Yeah, thanks again.
Thank you. We will now be distributing the ballots. One applicant was interviewed for Community Health and Senior Services, and there are three full-term seats available. Four applicants were interviewed for the Planning Commission for two full-term seats. Council may appoint two applicants. Five applicants were interviewed for the Complete Streets and Transportation Commission for three full-term seats and one short-term seat. Council may appoint four applicants. Four applicants were interviewed for the Parks and Sustainability Commission for three full-term seats. Council may appoint three applicants. Four applicants were interviewed for the Library Board for three full-term seats. Council may appoint three applicants. One applicant was interviewed for the Personnel Board for one full-term seat, and there's one short-term seat available as well. Six applicants were interviewed for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for three seats, a nonprofit employee seat, a Los Gatos employee or business seat, and a resident seat. Council may appoint three applicants. Four applicants were interviewed for the Arts and Culture Commission for three full-term seats. Council may appoint three applicants. And applicants will be notified of their application status tomorrow.
Okay. So I had a question. With regard to the DEI Commission, there's been a change, I think, in the policy. So if the council has a preference for someone who applied for the community spot for one of the other, either the nonprofit or the business owner or employee, are they permitted to make that vote?
The way the policy was written is that council may appoint from those specific seats, or they have the option to appoint from a resident seat.
Okay, I think that clarifies. Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I have a quick question. Under the DEI, under my form where it says DEI, it says there's three full-term, three-year terms plus one short-term of one year. So to me, that comes up with four people that could be appointed.
Yes. Sorry, my mistake. Yes, there is three full-term seats and one short-term seat.
So two of them are residents for sure, and then? Okay.
Let's confirm that. Let me just confirm that real quick.
Okay, thank you, because I was unsure.
We take a 10-minute recess. Ready to go? Okay, so are there any more questions of the clerk before we vote? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. How many folks did, how many and who did we get for Community Health and Senior Services that weren't original applicants?
The ones that requested to be considered if not appointed. For Community Health and Senior Services, we have four, or three.
Oh, and so they'll be on there? They'll be on our sheet?
No, so I believe what we're going to do is do the original ballot, and then once we determine who has been appointed, then we'll do another ballot. And if any of those individuals that requested to be considered were not appointed- that requested to be considered were not appointed, we'll do the ballot with those individuals.
Okay, sounds good.
As a follow-up, could you read their names?
Sure. For Community Health and Senior Services, it's Bernadette White, Patricia Uromay, Stephanie Wallace. And then for Personnel Board, it's Jeffrey Burnett and Bernadette White. So Bernadette White requested consideration for both Commissions, Community Health, and Senior Services, and Personnel Board if not appointed, and her original, her original application was for Library Board. Patricia indicated that she had interest in Community Health and Senior Services Commission, and she originally applied for Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. Patricia? And Stephanie Wallace indicated that she would like to be appointed to Community Health and Senior Services if she was not appointed to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. And then for the Personnel Board, Jeffrey Burnett indicated that he had interest in the Personnel Board if he was not appointed to the Planning Commission, and Bernadette White was indicated Personnel Board. And then I also wanted to clarify, for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion, it is for two full-term seats and one part-term, short-term seat. The full-term seats currently are for the business owner, employee, and the resident, and the short-term seat is currently for the nonprofit employee.
And then the additional applicants to the CHSSC and the Personnel, that'll be covered in a supplemental ballot, is that correct?
Correct, so if any of those individuals were not appointed to the original commission, then we'll prepare an additional ballot with those individuals' names, and then you can vote for those individuals.
Okay, very good. Let's just clarify, so go ahead.
Yes, Library is three. Okay, can read the ballots. So for Community Health and Senior Services, Jahila received four votes, one from Badami, one from Moore, one from Rennie, and one for Risto. She is appointed. For Planning Commission, Adam Mayer received unanimous vote from the full commission, he is appointed. Jeffrey Burnett received three votes from Moore, Rennie, and Risto, he is appointed. Ed Blan, Bolin received two votes from Badami and Houdis. Complete Streets and Transportation, Thomas Tikana received one vote from Houdis. Nigel Chandler received four votes from Badami, Moore, Rennie, Risto, and he is appointed. Tanam Akana Sam received a unanimous vote from all five council members, appointed. Tanya Stafford received all five votes, unanimous vote from all of council, appointed. Jeffrey Suzuki received all five votes from each council member, unanimous vote, appointed. Parks and Sustainability Commission, Sharag Mapara received five votes, unanimous from the council, appointed. Mark Richard received two votes from Moore and Rennie. Linus Lugberg received four votes, Badami, Houdis, Rennie, and Risto, appointed. Carla Richards received four votes, Badami, Houdis, Moore, and Risto, appointed. Library Board, Abby Horowitz-Brumley received five votes from all council members, unanimous, appointed. Bernadette White received three votes, Badami, Moore, Rennie, and is appointed. Edna Beck received five votes, unanimous decision of all council members, appointed. Kathleen Yen received two votes from Houdis and Risto. Personnel Board, Martha Johnson received five votes, unanimous vote of all council, appointed. Diversity Equity and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Lahela received two votes from Badami and Houdis. Tuba Ahmed received five votes. Unanimous of council. Appointed. Lynn Bruno received five votes. Unanimous of all council. Appointed. Patricia Uromay received one vote from council member Rennie. Joy Su received two votes from Moore and Risto. So there will need to be another ballot distributed to determine the third member that will be appointed to the DEI Commission. And we'll be distributing that shortly. Correct. Art and Culture Commission, Joy Su received two votes. Houdis and Rennie. Anne Lambert received five votes. Unanimous vote from all of council members. Appointed. Maureen Kapodjavi received five votes. Unanimous from all of council. Appointed. Stephanie Wallace received three votes. Badami, Moore, and Risto. Appointed. And then we'll be distributing the ballots for the DEI Commission appointment. And then following that, we'll do the appointments for any of the non-appointed members.
So there's going to be one more ballot after this for those that were not appointed? Is that correct?
Correct.
So this is just a runoff for people who had applied for those particular boards?
This is just for the DEI Commission. Because only two received enough votes to be appointed. So we still have one more spot. And as I stated, Lahela received two votes from Badami and Houdis. And Patricia received one vote from Rennie. And Joy received two votes from Moore and Risto. Okay. So Leila received one vote from Badami. Patricia received one vote from Houdis. And Joy received three votes from Moore, Rennie, and Risto. And is appointed. And now we'll distribute the ballots for the remaining. Okay. I've told you the votes. It's a unanimous vote. All council members voted for Patricia Uromay for Community Health and Senior Services. She is appointed.
My turn. And I would like to reappoint Linda Reiners to the Finance Commission.
Great. So is there any other business on voting?
Yep. That concludes our voting. There are the two vacancies. The one on the Community Health and Senior Services and the one on the Personnel Board. So if you'd like to provide direction to staff on that.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to extend the recruiting period for Personnel and Community Health and Senior Services until January 12th. And then the new mayor can decide when we do the interviews.
All second. Do you mean January 12th or do you mean December 12th?
Yeah. January 12th.
That's fine. Is there a reason you want to do it for so long?
Well, I think we would be jammed up against the holidays to pull off a meeting. Our first meeting in January is, I don't know when. If we were to do it in, you know, December, it might be hard to get in the meeting before the end of December. So. Is that okay?
Yes. We have a very full meeting schedule in December. And we have meetings scheduled before the regular meetings as well. So we do have the three meetings that are already scheduled.
That's totally fine. I guess one friendly amendment. I hope this doesn't happen. But if we lose anyone or anyone decides they can't commit, can we also recruit for any other vacancies through the 12th if they should occur?
If somebody's appointed and resigns, then we would have to advertise the vacancy for 10 business days. So I would defer to the attorney on what appointed would be in terms of if they resigned before their actual term began.
Meaning would another option be to appoint someone who applied but wasn't selected? Is that the question?
Meaning would we be able to recruit if they technically didn't start their term? So if they started their term and there was an unscheduled vacancy, we're required to post the vacancy for 10 business days before an appointment can be made? If they don't start their term, would that be considered an unscheduled vacancy?
I would consider it when they've been appointed. And they were appointed this evening.
Okay. So then if somebody were to resign, then we'd have to advertise the vacancy for 10 business days before an appointment could be made?
Okay. And it sounds like we would have, again, I hope this doesn't happen, but it did happen two goes ago. So could we, because there's so much runway with the January 12th date, that should be fine, right? Unless it's 10 days before that date, right?
It should be fine because we've done the recruitment earlier this year. There's plenty of time to inform the applicants of all their obligations. So if they decide that they can't fulfill those obligations, then we should have enough time to do another recruitment.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And so with that, I think we're done, right? This meeting is adjourned.